As the notice of hearing will be conducted electronically and there is a Zoom link on the agenda for the public hearing. For those of you listening at home, we will be taking each petition warrant article up separately, and we will have an opportunity to comment on each warrant article. Once we close petition warrant, did I say something wrong? No. Once we close petition warrant article, we will then move on to the next one and close that. We will not take a comment on the previous one. We're going to comment and close. Due to the circumstances relating to Zoom, we have a few protocols that need to be in place. First, prior to the beginning of public hearing, I need all of the participants who are joining us by Zoom to ensure that their screen name is their first and last name. So please go in and change that now. Second, all participants will have their video and audio off. You will not be able to turn on your own video or audio unless granted that permission by the host, and the host will be able to mute you. We will not be granted permission to have any video on, and the video will not be allowed on. Participants wishing to be unmuted should raise their hand to be acknowledged by the board chair. By using the Zoom raise hand feature, the host will alert the chair that your hand is raised. Once you're acknowledged, your audio will be turned on, but your video will remain disabled. And when you are done speaking, you will be muted. For the public input portion of the petition warrant article presentation, we are asking that input is restricted to Hollis and Brookline residents of voting age unless we make an exception for an administrator to ask a question. We need you to state your name and address. Your statements are being made to the board chair, and you need to keep your comments directed towards the petition warrant articles on the floor, if you will. Public input is not a question and answer opportunity. We will note your input, and we will consider it. We are asking that you keep your comments to two minutes, and we'll let you know when you have reached that point, and we will leave you. So it is two minutes. I will say it's two minutes, and then we will leave you. So you will be aware that the two minutes have expired. There are some, and Tom Solan, vice chair, will be timing comments, and he will give a 30-second warning. That's great. If you can manage that, more power to you. We have some requested, some of the petitioners have requested to present. They have been granted five minutes to present. They will have exactly five minutes. They will get a 30-second warning, and they too will be muted. All of those are the protocols that we've put in place to make this a meeting where everyone who wants to speak has an opportunity to speak, and everyone gets an opportunity to be heard. But we also have to respect everyone's time, and it's a Zoom meeting, and so we want to make sure that we are also incredibly safe in the content that gets put on the screen. So all screen sharing is going to be done from us. Can I just, have I covered everything? Is there anything that I'm missing? Okay. Do you think I've got it covered? Okay. So at this point, and I will be reading petition warrant articles. I have one other thing that I want to say. I don't know, but these are citizens petition warrant articles. These are not board, the board is not, the board wanted to take a position on these, but the board did not create these. So the words that I am reading are not coming from the board. They are coming from the citizen petition warrant article. So at this point, I will open the floor for petition warrant article one, which states, shall we adopt the provisions of RSA 32:5-B and implement a tax cap whereby the governing body or budget committee or presidency shall not submit a recommended budget that increases the amount to be raised by local taxes based on the prior fiscal years' actual amount of local taxes raised by more than 4%. And at this point, I think, I believe Mr. Power of Brookline is going to be doing a presentation. Is he there? As soon as he says not, as soon as we can hear.
Hello, this is Eric Power, 12 Westview Road, Brookline. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. I'm presenting this tax cap article on behalf of Hollis and Brookline voters. Next slide. This is just for reference, this is the petition warrant article. Note that it requires a 60% or three-fifths majority to pass. Next slide. For reference is the, this is the appropriate, the corresponding RSA for the tax cap and how it works. Next slide. The tax caps have been adopted by a number of towns and cities. I have them listed here, so you can see that it's not a unique, a unique adoption of the RSA, including the Brookline School District has a tax cap currently as well. If you take a long-term view at the co-op from FY 2005 to FY 22 over 17 years, the co-op spending has been up over 79%. At the same time, the student population has been down 6%. So that equates to a student spending that's up 82% during those 17 years. And for comparison, the inflation from the CPIU is up just 37% or about 1.8% annually. So we have co-op spending that's increasing at more than double the rate of inflation, which is a lot, and that's what the tax cap is going to help cure. Next slide. This is a graph showing the per cost, the cost per student, which is basically the operating budget in all warrant articles divided by the number of students that particular year. And you can see we are down around $11,300 in 2005, and it's been growing rapidly, especially in the past three years. We were at 18,200 roughly in FY 18 and 19, and now we've jumped way up, and we're going to be about 21,500 this year. So while inflation has been just about 37%, the cost per student has been up 82%. So we're more than doubling the rate of inflation in the co-op. Next slide. Co-op spending is, if you look at it, is really on an unsustainable trajectory. We've had a decreasing population, but we've had rapidly increasing spending. And what's even a little more alarming this year is that we're seeing, we're going to see very large tax rate increases for the co-op. These are numbers from the budget committee presented back on February 2nd. And this is going to be a tax increase of 15 and a half percent for Hollis and 15.9% for Brookline. And I would think that most taxpayers in the co-op would agree that these kinds of increases are not sustainable, and a tax cap would prevent this sort of increase from happening automatically. Next slide. Here's a composite plot showing, the bar graph showing the student population, and then the red line showing the, the operating budget, the budget we have for the co-op. And you can see in the last three years, inflation's been 4%. The students have been down 4%, but our budget is up over 13.3%. This is a problem. You can see in the NESDEC projections that the population is not expected to go up in the next five years for the whole co-op. So the budget should be not be going up at this alarming rate. We have the third year of our San Bernice teachers contract that's hitting us this year, and then we also have, well, next year will be this, it'll be a San Bernice increase, and we also have the turf field that we're paying for. Next slide. I would like taxpayers to consider, last year we had a 2% tax cap proposed. It got about almost 40% approval. It needs 60%. So this year, the citizens have decided to go for a 4% tax cap, which is way above any inflation we've seen in recent memory. 4% seems to be a very reasonable guardrail for spending. Provides a reasonable and sustainable spending profile for the Hollis-Brookline co-op. So I would encourage all voters to support this tax cap for reasonable and sustainable spending for the Hollis-Brookline co-op. Thank you very much. I'm done.
Do you know, at this point, is there anyone else raising their hand to comment? Do we have anyone else? I don't want to cut it off too soon because I want to make sure you can scroll through and see. I know there's no one out there.
It's going up and down. Ooh. There's one hand up. Do you see it, Bob? Oh, Cindy Reher.
Can I talk?
Yes, may I speak, Cindy?
Hi, this is Cindy Reher. I may have missed, I did miss because I couldn't find the passcode at the very beginning. I'm just curious when we'll act, I'm assuming this is just being presented tonight, and we'll vote on this at the annual meeting, or when will these be voted on?
The intention is to, this to be voted on in our annual meeting, which is, we are hoping to be an in-person meeting that we are working on the schedule for. Tonight we'll be deciding the date either April 10th or the 17th, or possibly an alternate date.
All right, thank you.
But we'll be doing an in-person meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Cindy. That was Cindy Reher for Hollis. Is there anyone else? No? Okay. Seeing no further comment on petition warrant article, we call this article one, but it's actually petition warrant article two, because we already have a petition warrant article, right?
Yeah, so all of you can do this.
Okay, so the one there tonight, okay.
So David Sacks has his hand up.
Who has his hand up?
David Sacks.
David Sacks? Okay, that's fine.
Hi. Can you hear me okay?
David, you are on.
Thank you. Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you for hosting us. I have a question on that warrant article. What's the, what's the margin that it has to pass by?
It has to get 60%. I'm sorry, this is David Sacks. David, your address?
23 Jamboard Road in Hollis.
And your question is, what is the margin that the vote needs to pass by? 60%?
Okay. Gotcha. Thank you.
Is there any other further comment? No?
Nope, thank you.
Thank you, David.
And we have Erin.
Erin, can you unmute Erin? Okay, I don't know if I said your last name right, Erin.
That's okay, that's okay. I'm used to it. So Erin Pincic, I'm at 133 Dow Road in Hollis. I'm retired, and my wife and I moved here about five years ago. And I'm appalled at the increases in the taxes in revenue being spent by the school system that we heard about in the earlier presentation. I don't have any kids in school right now, but I don't mind paying my fair share, which in Hollis is 70% of my property taxes to support the public school system. But these kinds of increases just demonstrate that there is poor fiscal management in our co-op school system. People need to pay attention to this, and something needs to be done about it, or you're going to be driving people like me and my wife out of Hollis because I don't want to pay for this. Right? Something needs to be done. I'm going to upset taxpayer looking at those statistics that we saw earlier, and I'm done.
Okay, thank you, Erin.
We have Jim O'Shaughnessy.
Jim O'Shaughnessy. Okay.
All right, so can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hi, everybody. Jim O'Shaughnessy, I'm legal counsel for the school district, and I'm weighing in only to clarify that under RSA 32:5, the, I believe the vote is, requires a three-fifths majority vote rather than a majority vote, and I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay. Thank you. Okay.
We also have Michelle St. John.
Michelle, Michelle St. John. Okay, so can we unmute Michelle? Okay, Michelle, you are unmuted.
I'll just be very brief. I'm just not in support of a tax cap based on impending legislation up in Concord that could drastically impact the state contribution to school budgets. Having a tax cap would be a huge detriment to the students, to the administration, to the school board, and their ability in creating a budget that would sustain our district. The other comment I would just like to make is, you look at what the cost per pupil at the high school level or the middle school within the co-op, it is comparable to many districts across the state. And so I would just say that this problem is connected to how we fund public education in New Hampshire versus this particular problem, and it will not be solved in a positive way by implementing a tax cap. Thank you.
Thank you. And Michelle, can you just state your name and address, please?
Yep, it's Michelle St. John, 29 Orchard Drive, Hollis.
Thank you.
So I see Brian Loveland.
Okay, I have a, I'll take Brian Loveland first, and then if the public would like to speak in public, just come to the mic, and I'll acknowledge you once we figure that out.
So whoever.
Yeah, I know, I got you. Brian Loveland, please state your name and address. Brian?
Hi, 17 Tobby Brook Road. And I just want to come and say I'm against this arbitrary tax cap that won't allow any wiggle room in case unexpected expenses, and with the state funding uncertain, we won't have the flexibility to continue having such a good school.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you. Doug Davidson?
Yeah, Doug Davidson, 85, Briar Road, speaking for myself, but I am the former ranking member of the Cooperative Budget Committee, and I want to say that the rates that we're looking at are really unsustainable from a long-term standpoint. We need to take a look at that and take care of comments. We're throwing a lot of our seniors and elders under the bus because they can't afford these rates of increases. And, you know, some of the, the dog whistle words you've heard before about the way we fund our schools, the provision here in Hollis and in the state of Texas to fund our schools locally with nominal amounts coming from the state relative to the overall budget, and that's a dog whistle for a state income tax, so let's call it what it is. The other thing I think we need to pay particular attention to, which kind of always goes under the radar, is the incredible role of the staff and the budget to the SAU office. As a former high school teacher, I can tell you that that's where the rubber meets the road. I think until actually anybody understands that, the classroom is where the rubber meets the road. And we've done a good job of keeping student-teacher ratios in check in terms of allowing optimal situations in the classroom. But the SAU office, all due respect to the staff there, who you might call their fairly regular, and I think they do a fine job. I think that that budget is growing too fast, and has been since my experience being on the budget committee, here and now for today, so I think the cap is in order. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson.
Cindy Reher has her hand up again.
Cindy Reher, is there anyone else before we let Cindy speak again?
No, I gave everyone else a chance.
Everyone else is gone. Okay, Cindy, we're going to bring you back on. Please state your name and address. I think we need to mute Cindy then. I don't, I'm not hearing from her. No? Cindy, are you there?
Let's try one more time.
Okay. Cindy, are you there? I don't think she's there. Maybe she accidentally raised her hand.
Sure, we have Patrick Haggerty now.
Patrick Haggerty? Okay, can you unmute them?
Hi, Patrick Haggerty, 25, Parker Road in Brookline. So I have a young child who has not yet entered the school district, and I don't see a problem with implementing a 4% cap on spending. It's not like we're cutting budgets, we're just saying you can't raise the budget more than that. Obviously, you know, as an educator or as people that are in charge of the education of children, you want to give the kids as best chances possible, and we have great reputation as a school district. However, you know, how long am I going to wait for my two-year-old to enter the schools, and how much am I going to pay, and are the schools going to continue to be worth that money as the student population continues to decline, if it continues to decline as predicted? So I am in support, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Haggerty.
Cindy has her hand up again.
Hear me this time?
Yes.
Sorry about the technical difficulties. Cindy Reher, 150 Wichita Spring Road, Hollis. I just wanted to find out when the school board will be, I guess, responding or providing your response to this, this proposal.
So tonight we will take a vote on, on each one of the petition warrant articles, all the warrant articles, so we will vote on this. Whether or not we comment will be decided when we take a vote. So we will have an opportunity, but we do not have a planned presentation.
Okay. Thank you.
So are there any other comments?
I see none.
Okay. Seeing no other hands raised or people in the audience, I will now close the public hearing on petition warrant article one at 6:50 PM. And I will now open, but I will read, I'll read the petition warrant article two, and then open before republic comment. So, shall we adopt the provisions of RSA 40:13, known as SB2, to allow official ballot voting on all issues for the Hollis-Brookline Cooperative School District on the second Tuesday of March? At this point, I'd like to open the floor, and I believe we have a presentation from Mr. Power on this topic as well. It is 6:51, I'm opening the floor now.
We should start one.
We need to bring up Eric Power, who has a presentation, and we will be screen sharing that as well.
Sorry, give me one second.
Eric, are you on?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Sorry.
Once we're, once we've got that, okay, you can go ahead, Eric.
Thank you. This, I'm speaking in behalf of the citizens of Hollis and Brookline that have put forth this petition to adopt the SB2 official ballot voting for the, for the Hollis-Brookline co-op. Next slide. What is SB2? SB2 is really a way to conduct our school district meetings in two sessions. It consists of a deliberative session and a ballot voting session. So the deliberative session is same, is the same format as our current meeting. It's open to all voters with debate, discussion, amendments, and motions. What the purpose of the deliberative session is to finalize the warrant articles for the second session, the ballot voting session. The main difference is, is that the final vote is a, an approval or disapproval of warrant articles is done in the second session. So here you finalize the warrant articles in the deliberative session, then you go to the ballot voting section, session, which is held on town election day, it's second Tuesday in March. So there's a private ballot vote on each warrant article that you finalize in the deliberative session. It's held at the same time as you have the town and school district elections and zoning questions, and the voting can be done anytime the polls are open, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, or you can vote by absentee ballot, which is a great advantage now, especially with COVID. Next slide. So the operating budget is the big, is one of the big things you have to consider. The operating budget will always exist. It'll either be the operating, you'll have a choice on the SB2 ballot to vote for a proposed operating budget from the deliberative session, or a default operating budget that's specified in the RSA, which is really, it's reduced by one-time expenditures from the previous year. And the proposed operating budget, depending on the deliberative session, can be higher or lower than default operating budget, but there'll be two, two numbers in that question for the operating budget. Next slide. The advantages of SB2 is it increases voter participation. In Brookline, we had over a thousand, almost 1,000 people that voted in the Brookline School District because we have SB2 for our school district. And there's two opportunities to participate. You can participate in the deliberative session or, and/or the ballot voting session. You also get more, at least 30 days after deliberative session to consider what you're going to be voting on. You don't have to be thinking about it in a split moment like you would at a school district meeting, and you actually can do fact-checking on things that have been said. You also have the privacy of ballot voting. You can vote your, your conscience, and you're doing it in the privacy of your ballot box. You also have the flexibility to vote anytime on election day or by absentee ballot, which is very important for business travel, college students, military members, snowbirds, and now with COVID. And those unable to attend the current town meeting and current school meeting still get the vote. You don't have to remain at a town meeting that goes to midnight or later. Next slide. The disadvantages of SB2 is that you have to communicate well after, before and after deliberative session to the, to the public on what you want to do and what the positions are in the warrant articles. You cannot also table warrant articles. Warrant articles will be voted upon. They're always placed on the ballot. They may be modified, but they're always going to be voted upon. Another disadvantage is that you can't do reconsideration and bring back articles multiple times. It's, it's either passed or it's defeated. It cannot be brought up later in a meeting. There is an exception for an operating budget if it's failed, but that's, that's been resolved by having the default budget. Next slide. This is just for reference that we've had meetings that have been one session, two session, three sessions, and even five sessions. It's difficult for voters to commit to go to these meetings versus doing a deliberative session and then a ballot session where they just go in and vote on election day. Last year, we actually had two meeting, two sessions, one for apportionment only, and then we had drive-through voting in June. So 2018, we had 14 hours of meetings. Next slide. This shows the, keep going, keep going. Next slide. Go down. This shows the attendance at SB2 in Brookline. We've had quite a few people voting, almost 1,000 that participate in it, and the deliberative session is about the same as our traditional meeting was when we started it. Next slide. So I would ask that, that voters, oh, next, before that, go back. I would ask that voters, it's moving around. Next, go down. There's more opportunities to, to participate with the two sessions. It provides a longer and more informed discussion on all warrant articles, and ensures privacy and ability to vote for all voters.
Eric, your five minutes are up. Thank you. Okay, at this point, I'd like to open the floor for public comment.
I see Barbara King.
Barbara King. Please state your name and address.
Hello, Barbara King, 15 Barton Road in Hollis. And I'm actually not terribly opposed to SB2, but I am opposed to the fact we just heard these 28 citizens that signed this petition aren't listening to the will of the voters from last year that voted down SB2. It continues to get voted down, and in a crazy year with the pandemic, we're throwing it back on the warrant. And one of the biggest arguments against SB2 is that the deliberative session can be taken over. Well, our current meeting is being taken over by 28 people that have put four petition warrant articles on because the bar to get a petition article is 25 people. So they're actually convincing me that they would go and take over deliberative sessions to get what they want. And I just wish they would really listen to the will of the voters, and maybe not every year, but how about every other year we put this up? Thank you.
Barbara.
I see Kat McGee.
Kat, okay. Kat, please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, Kat McGee, 237 Hayden Road in Hollis.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I was just going to say, similar to the last person who spoke, we do hear this over and over again, and I just wanted to say, although the presentation from Mr. Powers was quite informative, I think there are some things that he left out that are really critical in terms of context of what we would gain or lose, because democracy is hard. It's true, our town meetings are long, but it is the, the town meeting is the purest form of democracy, and it's really been a wonderful thing for me over the years, being able to attend and understand people in our community explaining the context around what we're voting for and why. And I have had the pleasure of serving in a floterial district with four towns, two of which had SB2 and two of which did not, and I attended SB2 meetings in the other towns. And I can say that the complaints that those towns have put forth after And I can say that the complaints that, uh, those towns have put forth after implementing SB two, and this has been reiterated by former state rep Jim Belanger in town many times in, uh, articles he's written against SB two, is that, uh, the deliberative session does not afford the same level of debate. So the warrant articles are merely presented. They are not debated. They are not discussed, uh, at the level that they are at town meeting. And so that level of understanding is not there. And also, um, one thing that was kind of glossed over, which has been very significant for many of the smaller towns is that if a group of people shows up at a deliberative session and decides they want to change a budget level item and remove $800,000, they, if they are able to pass that at the deliberative session, that's what goes on the ballot and there's no discussion about it. There's no way to change it. There's no way to table it. And so, um, you know.
Thank you, Eric. Thirty seconds. Your two minutes are over. Thank you, Kat.
Okay, I see, um, Patrick Haggerty.
Patrick Haggerty, please state your name and address.
Hi, Patrick Haggerty, 25 Parker Road, Brookline. So I, I think, I understand where Kat's coming from. I think she also contradicted herself a little bit. When you talk about pure democracy, showing up at the meetings is an important part of that. So if the deliberative session is something that you find important, which when we're talking about school district issues, you know, you should probably show up. And I understand that their schedules and there's, people have lives. But at the same time, this battle of attrition that has happened at the last few, um, co-op meetings, where it's gone late into the night and they basically wait until enough people have left and they vote on, you know, whatever it is they wanted to vote on and pass it. I think this gives us that time, that breathing room between forming the ideas that we want to vote on and then voting on them later. It gives people a chance to talk about them. And if you don't like it, if you don't like it, then don't vote for it. That's, that's a great part. And you can tell other people about it for more than a month that you don't like it and here's why you don't like it. So there's plenty of opportunity for discussion there between the deliberative session and the actual voting session. And then finally, uh, regarding the will of the people, the percentage of voters that voted for or against SB two was, uh, barely considered a majority, uh, I think of both Hollis and Brookline. There was not a high participation rate. And the majority that ruled there was, is who ruled, but, um, the will of the people, I don't think represents the entire picture from last year when the vote took place. Uh, that's all I have. Thank you.
Uh, Michelle St. John.
Michelle St. John, please state your name and address for the record.
Michelle St. John, uh, 29 Orchard Drive in Hollis, and I'm against this petition warrant, warrant article for multiple reasons, which many have, have been stated previously. I will echo, um, some of what Barb King said, what, um, Representative, uh, Kat McGee has said, and, um, the Honorable Jim Belanger, who spoke passionately year after year after year against SB two, who, um, by the way, has served on the municipal and county, um, committee, government committee for the state house for many, many years and is well-versed in this area. Towns, um, that adopt SB two see a decrease in participation in deliberative sessions, allowing small, yet very vocal groups attend and commandeer a meeting. Warrant article and propose and vote on changes that are detrimental to the district, our students, and the overall budget. Eric Powers' presentation, he really glossed over this one where he showed, um, he said his attendance in these deliberative sessions are consistent. I saw numbers of 40, 60, 40, 100, 69 people making those decisions. It's easy for a small, dedicated minority to come and commandeer a meeting. And they can change that budget because even though everyone's so excited to have all-day voting, that all-day voting, you don't get an opportunity for debate. You don't get an opportunity to ask questions. All you get is that decide, decided decision to vote on. And if a small group comes in, which isn't the majority of these two districts, what they want for their students in this community that impacts their property values, you don't have a choice. SB two is really easy to vote in. SB two is really difficult to vote out. Also, I've served on the Hollis School Board and participated in budgeting process for both that school, Hollis School Board and the SAU governing.
Okay, we have Maureen Matheson.
I'm sorry, I was saying.
Maureen.
Maureen.
Hi, my name is Maureen Matheson, uh, 60 Milton Place in Hollis. I just want to express my, um, opposition to SB two, uh, for the reasons stated previously. Um, I won't go into those again. Um, and also, but to, to state the fact that voting is down year after years become tiresome. I do plead with Mr. Power and the Powers and then the others to please stop putting this to a legislative body. Listen to the will of the people. Let it go. We don't want it. Knock it off. Thank you.
David Sacks.
David Sacks, please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, I'm David Sacks, 43 Jamodro, Hollis, New Hampshire. I'm a strong supporter of schools and education funding. I'm also a strong supporter of SB two. I lived in a town, Bedford, that has SB two. And, but for one year, every year, it was very possible to have thorough debate on every warrant. And you went, you wrote it on each item on the warrant, it looked like. You agreed on the language. 30 days later, you had a chance to then vote, uh, on the actual warrant itself. The benefit of SB two, the biggest one for me is absentee ballot. Uh, you, you are able to participate where not everyone is able to show up. The second thing is families with young children often can't stay and participate in every vote. This way they get to voice on every one. It's also people that can't stay late regardless of young children, jobs, flying, travel, whatever it might be, work. I just find that this is a way where we can have greater participation and greater participation equals greater democracy. Well, I mentioned one year in Bedford where it did go around, where a small group of people took over, uh, and did get some massive changes. And the purpose of our job is to be, uh, to be, um, committed and participating voters and to show up. If we don't show up, even in the current format, things can get taken over. So again, I support SB two and I wish we'd finally do it. Thank you.
David.
We have Mike Colina.
Mike, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Hi, my name is Mike Colina, 7 Mary's Way in Hollis. Um, I would like to voice my support for SB two. Um, I am, myself and my wife are, uh, two of those people that were spoken about, uh, where we are unable to, uh, attend meetings that run until all hours in the morning and wait for votes. Um, we've had three children go through the, the school system. One is currently still in. Uh, we're very interested and very invested in the quality of our school system. But that said, in our, in our time in this town with our children in the schools, we've attended these meetings a few times and have never been able to stay until voting time. As the previous, uh, speaker said, we have babysitters watching kids that can't stay till two in the morning. We have jobs that require us to be on phone calls at five or six in the morning. We can't be at meetings where people just debate the minutia of, of these, uh, warrants for hours and hours. Um, I think it's very valuable to have the session where people can, uh, voice and discuss. But as, uh, as it was stated, it would also be valuable to then have a month to research facts and details and then make informed decisions rather than decisions that are made after exhaustion of hours of mindless debate. Um, thank you. That's all.
Okay, we have Erin Pincic.
Erin, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, it's Erin Pincic. I'm at 133 Dow Road in Hollis. And I am speaking in support of SB two. Every one of the citizens in this town that pays taxes should have the opportunity to voice their opinion on the bill and legislation that comes up regarding the school system. Right? And so you, I'm not going to repeat what you've already heard about these meetings running ad nauseam into the night. Uh, but I can't stay that late, right? But, but I, I pay taxes. I pay a lot of taxes in here in, in Hollis for the school system. I expect to be able to voice my opinion and place my votes on these items without having to stay until 2:00 AM. And that's all I've got to say.
Thank you. Is that it? Okay, we have one person in public, in person. Please state your name and address.
Dr. Ruben, 180 Winchester Drive. Um, I don't know if anyone else had trouble, but I was on the Zoom call and I couldn't raise my hand, so. I don't know if that's an issue for other people, that's why I came down.
Okay, thank you.
So, um, I'm speaking against the petition article for SB two. Uh, the benefit of our traditional town meeting is that all voters get to see and hear from both sides of an issue. In my opinion, town politics has largely been free from the partisan ranker that national politics suffers from. Seeing and hearing directly from your neighbors and learning their viewpoints helps us understand each other and work together towards the best solutions. The SB two system allows voters to be influenced by advertising campaigns and partisan. People often seek out information that supports or reinforces their own biases. Look at the national news channels like Fox or CNN. Without the complete picture from a traditional town meeting, a local politic will suffer from the same divergence of opinions in fractured nature as it has on the national level. Please vote no on this article and preserve the great system that we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mascot, mascot. Please give the mascot. Thank you. Sorry. Anybody else? Okay. Um, I don't know what to do about that, okay?
Bob, you have any evidence? I sent a message to all the participants in chat saying that if there is an issue with hand raising, you can use the chat option to be able to indicate their desire to speak and I'll let you know.
Okay. So if you did hear that, just in case you couldn't hear Bob, um, if you'd like to comment, please send him a chat message. And I've been given like a minute.
We have Linay Day.
Did she raise her hand?
Raised her hand.
She raised her hand. Okay. Linay?
Yeah, hi, Linay, Linay Day, 140, oh, sorry. Uh, Linay Day, 145 Broad Street. Um, my only comment is that the chat feature is disabled and so we can't actually send, and maybe it's just for me, but I just tried to send a chat and it was disabled. So, um, yeah.
Well, there are enough hands being raised. I.
Do you have hands raised now?
I mean, not at the moment, but we've had quite a few.
I don't mind. It doesn't matter. I mean, I have that one. Okay, so. I'll just, if you're listening, here's my cell phone, 759-9175. Text me now if you want to participate. I don't care. They're all going to text me. I don't care. I don't even.
I did get a message that the chat function did work.
Okay, so the chat function is working. I am not, I'm giving one more, like 10 more seconds and then if I don't receive a text from anybody, then I am, and I'm not going to repeat that number, see?
I'm already posted on Facebook.
Okay, that's good. I don't care. It's really, it's a problem. It's not really something I'm going to repeat. Okay. Anything? Anyone? All right. At this point, I'm going to close.
Uh, Rob Mann.
Oh, Rob, okay. Rob, man, please state your name and address for the record. I feel like I know everyone who's had a cell phone today. This is my small town.
Hey folks, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can. Say your name and address.
Rob, man, 29 Nartoff Road, and I want to speak in opposition to this, um, perennial, uh, warrant article. It comes up every year. We go through this debate every year. We hear the same, uh, you know, reasons for having it and the benefits and the pros and the cons and everything else. All it does is take up time in our regular meetings. And for folks that are, that put forward about the deliberative session and all the great things in a deliberative session, I would ask each and every one of you to consider that we already have that. It's called public hearings that we have just held this week with very little participation. And I would also ask you to also consider that we also have a deliberative session for the SAU, um, budget that we have in early December. I've been serving on this board since 2007. I can count the people who have showed up to that deliberative session on one hand over that entire time. Um, I would be very concerned, I continue to be concerned about the very small turnout of a SB two deliberative session and the shenanigans that can take place under that, those kind of, uh, situations. I have been, I am now and will continue to be against SB two. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mann. Any more? I have not gotten any texts.
Hold on. iPad 15.
What is it?
iPad number 15.
Hi. This is Lee Kubashda, 94 Hayden Road in Hollis. I am for SB two and I think that the people who have spoken against SB two actually have made my point for me and reaffirmed my commitment to SB two. Um, the, they discuss lack of participation and lack of involvement. And I think that that very point speaks to the fact that people would be more participative if they could vote and not have to stay up until whatever time. I've been to some of these meetings as well and it is, um, an arduous process. I think the deliberative session and having the 30 days between allows people and trusts that people will self-educate themselves and vote accordingly. I think that the, the back and forth and, um, people arguing back and forth for hours on end is what turns people off to participating. I know I would much prefer to have the facts from both sides in evidence and be able to make an informed decision on my own and then vote. And I think that SB two allows that possibility. And I am a strong proponent of SB two. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Lee. Anyone else?
Michelle St. John again.
Is there anybody who hasn't spoken?
Oh, all of a sudden. Hold on.
Okay, Michelle.
Uh, thank you. Thank you for letting me speak again. I just wanted to finish what I was going to say when I was cut off. And by serving on the, um, school board and participating in the budget process uh, for both the Hollis School Board and the SAU Governing Board, I wanted to say that budgets don't happen in a vacuum. Um, budget season begins practically after, um, the annual district meeting. And it takes months and goes through iteration after iteration after iteration. And much time is devoted during those, uh, monthly school meetings to go through the budget to ensure that, um, there isn't overspending. I've saw, I've seen wonderful things start off on the budget and you think this is going to be great for the students and they get cut. And they get cut because of the guidance that our budget committees, the co-op committees, the Hollis School Committee, the Brookline Budget Committee, those are the ones who are providing that guidance to us. It is a process. And to just say that, um, that is not valuable and someone can come in and say, we're going to change this and take all of that months of consideration and hard work out of the process is, is just, it just seems ludicrous to me. We, these are the experts. These folks spend time on this. And the other point I wanted to make was, you know, we're sometimes there till 2:00 AM because of warrant art, petition. petition articles such as these, we're sometimes there till 2:00 AM because there are hot button topics that people want to debate. You know, how do you decide on what it is if you don't have the full information? You know, can you depend on, on, do you, we come to those meetings for the facts, not for falsities, not for opinion, but the facts. And so again, I'm going to say that SB two is not the solution. If people don't want to come to those meetings and they want to just vote on something, perhaps we should be looking at a representative meeting rather than individuals. I mean, this is just not the solution for Hollis. People like information, they like to ask questions.
Thank you.
We have Aaron Pankasek again.
Okay, Mr. Aaron.
So I'm back, Aaron Pankasek, 133 Dow Road in Hollis. And yeah, I, I agree with a lot of what she just said there. It's, it's a process that we have to go through, but it doesn't have to be an arduous process. It has to be a process where all the citizens have a reasonable opportunity to represent their views on these topics. Right, and to the earlier presentation we saw on the previous warrant article, you know, the expenditures that we're seeing projected in the school system are just unreasonable. And, you know, we, we need to be reasonable about it and everybody needs to have their ability to present their view relative to the school system budgets and other topics for that matter in the town. And SB two would enable that. There's no reason, I mean, so look at what happened in our recent election, the presidential election, right? We had all the mail-in ballots and everything that happened, right? That's no different than SB two. So people are okay with that, why are we, why are we not okay with SB two? I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else? Let me just double check. No text.
Mallory Rizler.
You have somebody else?
Mallory Rizler, yep.
Mallory? Please state your name and record and address for the record.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Hi, Mallory Rizler, 14 Hobart Hill Road in Brookline.
Okay, go ahead.
I just wanted to share my experience as someone who has lived in town for a few years and was a supporter of SB two before I started attending the deliberative sessions between both Brookline and the co-op school board. I'm a mother of three small children. I get the, we can't stay late, we can't, it's exhausting, so I can see those points. But I think we just have to look at what we sacrifice for one or a couple nights a year to what we're gaining. You know, when we're sitting in that pickup line, picking up our kids from school, when we see their faces get off the school bus, when we're so enjoying what a great asset we have in our two towns. I think we need to think about what we're giving as citizens. So that would be my first point. And the second point I would have to say is, I would have, it's the petition articles that I would have to, would what previous speakers have said or what are causing the most issues. I can say for myself as somebody who does not support SB two, because as people have said previously, I won't keep going over it, it continues to be the same small group of people who continue to bring these things to light. So I would say that the trust necessarily is not there for me that things are being done in the best way and in the best interest of our kids and our two towns. Thank you.
Anyone else? Y'all good?
I think so.
Okay, at this point, I'm going to close public comment petition warrant article two at 7:24. I will open the floor for petition article three, which is to see if the Hollis Brookline Cooperative School District will, to see if Hollis Brookline Cooperative School District will vote to amend the Articles of Agreement of the Hollis Brookline Cooperative School District by deleting Article Three as currently written and substituting new article as follows. Article, the suggestion Article Three would be, the Hollis Brookline Cooperative School District shall be responsible for grades nine through 12. I'm going to open the floor for public comment at 7:24 PM. We will start with a presentation by Mr. Power. You have five minutes, Eric.
Yes, this is Eric Power. I'm presenting this on behalf of Hollis and Brookline voters about realignment of the Hollis Brookline Cooperative School District. Next slide. This is the warrant article that Chair Daraloo just read to you, basically changing Article Three of the Articles of Agreement. For those who aren't familiar, the Articles of Agreement is basically the constitution of the co-op and it specifies how we do things at a high level. And this is the one that talks about the grades. Next, next slide. So this picture here is showing the current organization of the SAU, where we have a K through six Hollis School District, a K through six Brookline School District, and then we have a co-op at the bottom, which has grades seven and eight at Hollis Brookline Middle School and grades nine through 12 at Hollis Brookline High School. If you go to the next slide, it will show the proposed change with this article of agreement change would make Hollis School District K through eight and Brookline K through eight, and then the co-op would be nine through 12 at Hollis Brookline High School. Next slide. So why, why consider realignment? Why do the citizens think this is a good idea? Well, the current middle school facility, as you'll see, is, is old and I'll go through some details on that. We also see the student population growth coming up in the elementary schools by the NESJAC projections. That's the organization that the SAU uses every year to figure out where, how many students we're gonna have in the future with a predictive model. There's also financial conditions of historically low bond rates and revived building aid proposed by our legislature. And then I'm also gonna talk a little bit about the Articles of Agreement process that we have. Next slide. So the next, keep going, next slide. The current middle school building was actually built in 1953. It's 68 years ago. It had an addition in 1961 and 1982, a renovation in 93, a maintenance upgrade in 2003, and then a major renovation and addition in 2005. There's been three major additions on this 60-year-old building. And if you look at it, further expansion is not really practical and it would be very expensive. Next slide. So why, what's going on with student population growth? So here's, here's what we're seeing at our seventh and eighth grade now. And you actually see, starting in the year 2022, it's about equal between Hollis and Brookline. And then Brookline will actually have more students in seventh and eighth grade than Hollis, according to NESJAC. And you can also see that we're gonna start getting to, towards the high end of what the school can actually handle in the year 2028 and 2029. The point I'd like to make is, it took us about five years to expand this middle school for those who were in town. So it's a process you need to start because it takes a long time for things to pass, to investigate, and then actually do the construction. Next slide. So if you look at what's happening in Hollis, which is the blue here, Hollis is actually gonna grow rapidly in K through six, 41% by the year 2028. They're gonna get up to 843 students per NESJAC. They're not gonna have enough room in their Hollis Primary Hughes to hold everybody. So this, this realignment would actually help Hollis because they would have a, they could use Hollis Brookline Middle School. Next slide. So possible usage could be Hughes being three, four. HMS would be Hollis Middle School, five through eight. Brookline would build a brand-new Brookline Middle School or expand CSDA. And then we would still have the co-op in the high school for grades nine through 12. Next slide. Financial conditions, bond rates are at historic lows, they're very favorable for renovation, new construction. And there's, there's two, there's two house bills, you can look them up, 214 and 594, that are gonna revive school building aid. Next slide. Here's the Articles of Agreement. There's Article 15 in the Articles of Agreement calls out how we would do this process if there's a vote. So this is, this article is the initial vote by the legislative body. They would form a grade reduction committee. The committee would develop an educational plan, a public, they would hold a public hearing of the proposed plan. It would be sent to the State Board of Education. And then there'll be a final vote on that by the legislative body. So there's actually two, two votes by the legislative body to determine this is the right way to go. Next slide. Thank you. Support realignment of the Hollis Brookline Cooperative School District. It's a proactive approach for our children. We don't want the middle school to get overcrowded like it did last time and not have any options. And lastly, I'd just like to say, I cannot do chat and I cannot do any hand raising in my Zoom. So I, I'd like to speak on the next article if I can't get through. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Eric. Okay, so people are still having hard time getting through. They could email any of the SAU administrators that are currently here, right? Use the team email, that would be Andy Corey at SAU41. Is it Andy or Andrew?
Either one.
Andrew. Andrew.Corey@SAU41.org. Bob Thompson, Bob.Thompson@SAU41.org. Or Gina Burksaw. B E R K S.
The E R D F K.
E R D S K. A U T. Gina dot, that last name, at SAU41.org. So Andy or Bob will probably be your message. But we are, you know, they can email any of us, you know, we, we're all watching our phones. So if there's somebody out there who cannot get through, you can email the SAU team, like the three that are sitting here, and you can email me on the SAU41.org, probably that pop. And I will see it, I'll watch it. And you can also text me, I gave my number out early. And I'm not seeing any texts right now.
I see Barbara King.
So Barbara King to open comment on petition. Actually, I just have a question for the attorney, Jim, before we open public comment. Yeah, good, Jim. Can you hear me? Jim, can you hear me? Can you, Jim?
Yes, I can hear you loud and clear, Holly.
Jim, I just wanna know if you, and I'm putting you on the spot and asking you to look this up or anything, but legally, do you know if, if this were to pass and the article changed nine through 12, like this pass, or we have a new Article Three, nine through 12, would that be effective July 1st, 2021?
Oh, no, the, the Article 15 of the Articles of Agreement has a pretty comprehensive process for forming a, a, a study committee. And the study committee has to propose a plan. The plan, I have, I, I don't know the details of the process intimately, but there's a plan. It has to be approved at various levels. And the plan itself establishes the timetable for the transition. And so it's not, it's not dictated at this level. It's definitely not gonna happen by July 1st, 2021. That, that's not even possible. I don't know if it would be possible for it to happen by July 1 of 2022, but the, but the committee develops the timetable, if that helps at all.
For yours to the committee then, if this were to pass?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Is there, do you have a question for this? No? Okay, maybe during the period. Okay, and Tom's gonna answer my question for me, that's helpful. Okay, okay, thank you. All right, so now we have Barbara King commenting. And Barbara, just state your name and address again.
Hello, Barbara King, 15 Barton Road in Hollis. I just wanna start with, you know, Mr. Power has certainly changed his tune from his conversations in Brookline last week, where this was based on how this would save Brookline taxpayers money. And this is not realignment, this is again, breaking up the co-op, which Brookline voted down last year to save, Brookline voted to stay in the co-op. A few years ago, Hollis voted for a study and then decided it was too expensive. So, you know, we've been through all this, so I just ask the voters, dig into this and don't fall for realignment. He's particularly targeted special education costs. And the numbers he was showing seem to be void of some particular things of interest, I think, to all voters, which is return on investment and economies of scale. And those are two sound financial principles with even putting forth an article like this the petitioner should be thinking about. If you think about, if you have Brookline put forth a middle school or a middle school and high school, you're talking about tens of millions of dollars that first you have to pay before, as Mr. Power stated last week, you start to save money. This return on investment is, I would say, 15 to 18 years away at a minimum from now. So don't fall that this is to, this is just to assess. This is about breaking up the co-op and the voters have spoken several times over the last year. And this will decimate our property values in Hollis and Brookline, where the underpinning is our great schools. And that's all I have to say tonight.
Thank you, Steve. Next, we have that.
We have Kat McGee.
Kat McGee, please state your name and address for the record.
Kat McGee, 237 Hayden Road. I, I am opposed to this warrant article. And I just wanted to say something briefly about the presentations and the comments about the unsustainability of the taxes based on the schools. It's true that a significant portion of our taxes go to the schools, that's, that's the way it works. But when I look at my tax rate in Hollis for 2015 was $23 and change. And in 2016, it was $23 and change. And in 2017, it was $23 and change, 2167 in 2018, and 2310 for 2019. So our taxes have been held very steady in terms of the amount per thousand. We are not seeing exorbitant increases in our tax impact based on the cost of the schools. And I think that that goes back to the point that was made by Michelle St. John, that the people who are volunteers that do our budgets actually do a really good job of holding us steady and doing right by the taxpayers. So I think that it's a false argument that we hear again and again and again, that we should be alarmed when actually, you know, our tax rate's been very, very steady over this time. So, that's it.
Thank you.
We have David Sacks.
David, you're on, please state your name and address again, sorry.
No problem, this is David Sacks, 43 Jambard Road in Hollis. I am flabbergasted by this article, to be quite candid. I think it's ridiculous, there's no merit to this. The middle school is successful, the co-op is successful. It's what makes this, our two towns desirable and, and very healthy. The interesting thing in this presentation from the petitioner is that he talks about how the numbers are going up and our schools are overcrowded. And in the petition warrant article number one, the same evening, just not too long ago, he talked about how our numbers are going down and now we need a tax cap. I'm finding it a little confusing to see two completely alternate arguments. Frankly, if we lose his rationale that our numbers are going up and bond rates are low, it's much cheaper to do an addition than to build a brand-new school in a separate town and then to have Brookline have a separate administrative cost for their own school furnace, all those fixed costs. We get a lot of synergy by having a combined school for middle school. You bring two towns together, it's great for the students, their ability to interreact and work together. It builds, it builds teamwork across the school, the classes that you can offer with that cohort. It's a school with good enough size that you can do a lot. We have a huge diversity of math and other programs and great offerings in sport and co-curricular. So I, I think there's no rationale at all for this, none whatsoever. And every argument given for it, to me, sounds completely ludicrous. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Patrick Haggerty.
Patrick, please state your name again and your address.
Yeah, Patrick Haggerty, 25 Parker Road, Brookline. I also like to, to raise my voice against this warrant article. It, it just doesn't make financial sense as somebody who lives in Brookline and pays Brookline taxes for us to support even two more grades with our current facilities and the prospect of adding on facilities on our own taxes and, or even building new facilities and finding land and going through that entire process. I can't imagine that getting school aid for Brookline alone does more benefit than getting school aid and bonds for Brookline and Hollis to do renovations or improvements or even replacements of buildings because we share that financial burden together, even if it's not, you know, 50/50 based on our individual towns' tax rates. So that's what I have to say about that. Before I go though, I also wanted to point out that for the Before I go though, I also wanted to point out that for those folks who might be having problems raising their hand, they can't find the button, you have to leave full screen mode of Zoom. And on the bottom right corner on a desktop app, you'll see the list of people. And below that, on the right is a little raise hand button. So if you're having trouble locating it, that's where it is. If not, they've given you the other options. I just wanted to state that. Thank you very much, I'm done.
Thank you, Patrick, that's helpful.
We have Darrell Smith.
Darrell Smith, please state.
Yep, hi, Darrell Smith, 42 Rocky Pond Road in Brookline. Definitely am voting, want this to be a no vote. I've been hearing constantly how Eric spends a lot of time giving, you know, sort of what I call surface presentations. And I'm constantly seeing him be the spokesperson for each of these warrant articles that are just frustrating everyone from both towns. This is literally one of those things that's ticking me off because what it's basically doing is there is a Hollis Brookline sort of fabric here that's trying to be unraveled. And I think the majority of people don't want that to be the case. And this is one of those areas where we're trying to create this separation of the two towns is oh, we don't get along, when in fact, we truly do. So my kids are enjoying the kids from Hollis, the kids from Hollis, to a certain extent, are enjoying the kids from Brookline. I think we need to just figure out how we can basically just find a common sense way to basically get this thing moving forward and stop trying to separate the two communities. It's pretty much driving this. And it's starting to just tick me off if you really want to know the truth. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. I would like us to, thank you so much for your comments. I'd like us to try to refrain from commenting about another commenter. I have someone texted me that Robert Mann would like to speak.
Yep.
So I'm gonna let him go and then I'm gonna go to a person who's in person and then we'll go back to the Zoom call. So Robert Mann?
Hi folks, I was looking for the mute button. So I'm just gonna be trying to be very succinct here. I'm gonna talk about what I heard tonight, what I didn't hear. I heard I'm supposed to support a tax cap because of declining enrollment. And I've heard that I'm supposed to support realignment because of increasing enrollment. That's coming, so that's confusing. I saw NASDAQ data that was out like 27 years. I can tell you, we plan on NASDAQ best within five years of that data. We do not, as a best practice, go beyond roughly five years. So 27 years is ludicrous. I'm very concerned about the Brookline students and where they would go that would normally matriculate into the co-op. I heard nothing about where they're going. I'm very concerned about that. I didn't hear anything about change management, how we're going to implement and execute such a thing without messing up a year of the students' education. Didn't hear anything around that. I also didn't hear from our education professionals. I didn't hear of any impact study about how we do it, you know, and what impact that might take on the students themselves during this change. So I'm just totally confused and totally not very clear as to what the point of this article is. Thank you.
Mr. Mann, that was Rob Mann. He spoke earlier, his address is in the record. Tiffany, go ahead.
Hi, Tiffany Tessa, 111 Hill Road. I'm a math and science teacher. We were teaching statistics. I'm not confused at all about the use of data. You can use that data in any way you want. And I hope the community saw those two very different uses of the data. That was, it could have been confusing, but not me. How can our numbers be going up and down and left and right? I don't know. But I do teach my students to look out for that kind of stuff. The thing that I hear and miss, I saw it in the petition, I hear it now, this is a money thing, so I'm going to give a different perspective. That would be the perspective of the student. So coming from education, developmentally, this, our program that we had for a very long time makes absolutely sense. Not only that, but the middle school is probably one of the biggest gems in both communities. So again, this is not, this shouldn't be divisive. We built bridges and our middle school does exactly what it needs to do when our kids are at the age that they need it. So the redefining of self that we're going through all the time is how they may need friendships, they build bonds that last through high school. And our middle school works fine. And also the primordial part, I just don't get it. Two new schools, the principal, our tax, and kind of go up. Thank you.
Thank you, Tessa.
We have Erin Pincasek.
Okay, Erin, please state your name again. Erin?
Go ahead, Erin. Let me, there we go. So Erin Pincasek, 133 Dow Road in Hollis. And the lady earlier talked about the tax rate being flat. So we've been in this house in Hollis now for about five years. And in that period of time, our tax rate has gone up by 16.25%, which is 3.25% per year. The bulk of it has gone to the school system, right? And so I know this is really not this article that we're talking about, maybe the previous one, right? But she needs to understand that what she's saying is not true for everybody in Hollis, right? And all of you need to understand that too. We should not be increasing taxes indiscriminately in this town or you're gonna lose your citizens and lose your tax income as a result of doing so. That's all.
Thank you.
We have Michelle St. John.
Michelle St. John again. Go ahead, Michelle.
Thank you. I have to say that I echo Mr. Sacks and Mr. Smiths and others in the flabbergasting idea of this petition warrant. I just, I don't understand. Our middle school is a jewel and the relationship students begin to have with teachers and with classmates from both towns. I have children who've gone through that district, who are in the district, who are in the schools, who have been through the schools, and those relationships with the other students form at that time. I also want to say that there is no way we can depend on a school building aid fund. I again am flabbergasted that we are told in one petition that we have a decrease in population and another that it's going to go, you know, out of the park and we need to make plans for that. I also would like to say that I looked at the petition and who signed it. I didn't see a single Hollis resident sign the petition. And I wonder, I question, how many people who sign that petition have students in that school district and understand what they're doing by pulling it apart? Who benefits from this? How are you going to pay for it? How is it going to impact the town and the community? So I completely, unequivocally oppose this. Thank you.
We have Maureen Mastison.
Maureen, go ahead. Name and address, please.
Hi, thank you, Maureen again. Maureen Mastison, 60 Milton Place, Hollis. Yeah, I agree with everything Michelle and Mr. Sacks and Mr. Smith and Mr. Mann have said. I won't repeat that. But I will bring in a story. I went to the Wilton Limeburg Apartment of Junior Senior High School, which is a sixth grade school just nearby. And I, it was wonderful. As a fifth grader, as a sixth grader, I looked forward to merging with the other town of Wilton. I looked forward to going to that new school and getting to meet new friends and new people and expanding my fish tank, my sea. And I think our kids do too. I know our kids are excited to meet our fellow, their fellow classmates in the seventh grade. And it's going to be, it was very exciting for them. I think if anything, we should be expanding the co-op, not breaking it apart. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We have Gillian Hinkle.
Hello, my name's Gillian Hinkle, 16 Hillside Drive. I just wanted to say about the NASDAQ study, I don't think it takes into account housing availability. Our districts, both Hollis and Brookline, have extreme limitations on the amount of housing and how much can be built out. And that study doesn't seem to take this into account, which makes the numbers that Mr. Sacks shared unlikely.
Yes, go ahead.
We have Daniel Palmer.
Daniel Palmer, state your name and address, please.
Yes, hi, I hope you can hear me. Daniel Palmer, 167 North Pepperell Road, Hollis. I just want to quickly echo my support for what David Sacks said, what Michelle St. John said regarding this article, which I find equally ludicrous for all the reasons that they stated, so I won't repeat it. But I want to go back to something Barbara King also said about how we go through this over and over and over again. Every year, we have a small group of people who seem to put together these citizen petitions that are tremendous hot button topics that require all of this debate. And the vast majority of the time, these all fail. And so I guess what I want to put out there, I don't know if it's possible and I don't know if the law supports it, but we have a school board in place for a reason. And perhaps the time has come that these citizen petitions have to first pass the school board. And if it doesn't, if it gets a no vote across the board from the school board, which I am 100% sure this is gonna get, then we shouldn't have to waste our time hearing these kinds of arguments and seeing these kinds of presentations that we all know are going to go nowhere. This co-op in this school is extremely important to the town. It's what makes these towns great. We know that this isn't going to pass. And I hope that there could be a process put in place in the future that would prevent us from having to listen to some of these arguments if they don't even pass the basic SNIF test from our school board, who has volunteered their time and has done a tremendous service for us. So that's all I want to say. I want to thank you very much. I know these are difficult circumstances and thank you for your effort and your time tonight.
Palmer?
So we have three new hands and they're all repeat speakers.
Okay, I also wait. Member four who wants to speak as a member of the public.
As a member of the public.
Okay, so that would be, and then I also have another person in public. Show me the tape, Liz, and then Mr. Garuba, and then the three repeats. Go ahead, Liz Brown.
Elizabeth Brown, 10th way. I think part of the night, and I'm gonna refer to something that was stated, because I want to make sure, I'm not the speaker, but I want to make sure that the public gets to hear the factual information close in time to the time that the allocation was made that the tax rate in Hollis had increased over 15% in the last five years. Not at all what is the case. If you look back in 2016, the tax rate for Hollis was $23.44. The tax rate for 2021 is $23.15. That's actually a reduction and I couldn't pass high school math. So I want to make sure that we understand what the facts are and we're not just listening to rhetoric. And everybody has the capability of pulling their own tax bill. You're in Hollis, go to the Hollis Town website, you can pull up your tax bill for all the last years and you can figure out exactly how much your tax bill has gone up. And you look for the real facts about not what people were saying about the rhetoric. And tax rate does not always equate a higher tax bill. Because once the houses are reassessed, it's a calculation and that's what results in the tax rate.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Mr. Garuba will be next.
Thank you, Mr. Garuba, 20 East West Drive. I just want to point out a couple of things, a couple of points. I want to speak in favor of this warrant article. But specifically, it's my understanding that a affirmative vote on this article actually starts a studying committee. It doesn't instantly dissolve the co-op. It's not even, the article isn't even intending to dissolve the co-op. It's intending to just shift two grades from the co-op. The other thing is there's a lot of discussion about the NASDAQ projections. And specifically because of, because of the wider implications of COVID, I think those NASDAQ projections, which are showing a considerable increase, I wouldn't be surprised to find that those NASDAQ projections are low because of the amount of development that was going here in town now. And the last thing I want to point out here is that the closer decisions are made at the local level, meaning the more, let's say, meaning the Hollis School Board as opposed to the co-op board, the more local decisions are, the more people have influence or direct, more direct influence over decisions. So any shifting of students or grades from the co-op to the Hollis district will give Hollis and as well as Brookline residents more influence directly over the education of children of grades. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and we have some repeats. Okay, go ahead.
We have Gillian Hinkle.
Oh yes, Gillian's not a repeat, she actually gets to come and disturb her again. Gillian, sorry about that, I don't know what happened. Gillian, are you there?
Am I now on mute? We were, you were, it kept on remuting for me. It kept on saying, so I don't know how that was happening. Apologies. Gillian Hinkle, 16 Hillside Drive. I just wanted to say that the NASDAQ report doesn't take into account housing availability, which is very limited in both Hollis and Brookline. So the likelihood that we would actually achieve the increases that are being predicted seems very unlikely, which leaves me not in support of this warrant. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Gillian. Thank you. And who else do we have?
We have David Sacks.
David, again, Mr. Sacks.
Yeah, hi. Different question for the board or legal counsel. What is, where do we get the minimum number of people required for a petition? And what would be the process to raise it?
So I guess I'm gonna let the legal counsel answer that, because I'm not an expert on it, but it is 25 people is the minimum. And Jim, that's not something that can be changed, is it? Well, it can be, but not by us. Is Jim there?
Is that state law, is that something that we can have a rule in Hollis Brookline?
Hi, I can answer, Holly. You pretty much had it already. The governing laws, RSA 197:6. And it basically says that it's a written application of 25 or more voters or 2% of the voters of the district, whichever is less. So you'd have to change the statute, is basically the answer. And, you know, we're gonna end up talking about this, I feel, at some point, since we're on the topic. But the RSA 197:6 actually creates a legal right for the petitioners to have their petition warrant article placed on the warrant, provided that the petition article itself isn't illegal. There are very limited circumstances where petition articles are actually illegal. And so barring an illegal petition warrant article, there is a right to have it on the warrant. And right now, there's not, there's not any way to change that process.
Thank you, Jim. David, does that answer the question?
Yeah, thank you both.
Is there someone else?
We have a John G.
John G, okay. John?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, I just need your name and address for the record.
Yeah, no problem. My name is Jonathan Garuba at 30 Meadow Drive, Hollis. I'd just like to offer my sentiment. I've heard several comments talking about restricting residents' rights to raise petitions. And I think that's certainly the wrong way to go to try and take away rights that have been in place for a long time. And frankly, I'm concerned that people would want to add, just take away control from the individual town residents that vote. So I just wanted to raise that, thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. Is there anyone else?
We have Eric Power.
Mr. Power.
Yes, this is Eric Power. I just wanted to mention, when I was showing the projections, I was showing not the same projections. The co-op is going down in population, and that is true. It'll eventually go up long term. The projections I'm showing about the K through six, that's where there's going to be a rapid increase, especially in Hollis. And Hollis is going to run out of space if these projections are true. And I understand the school board, I was on the school board previously, it five years, is, you know, the reliable one, but you have to, you can't just dismiss what's happening beyond those numbers. I think you have to plan for that. And so I'd rather have us be a little proactive in this. This is, this process will take many years to complete, and I think it's just wise to be able to look at it and determine what the facts are, and then we'll also have a better idea what's happening with the population. So yes, the population in the K through six is increasing, and the population in the seven through 12 is decreasing. Eventually, the seven through 12 will see that bubble, and it will also increase. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Power. Is there anyone else?
We have Michelle Finkjohn.
Okay, Michelle, go ahead.
I'll just be very brief. I just wanted to say something about the petition articles. And while I understand what the last gentleman said, I appreciate what Mr. Sacks said in regards to the same group of people bringing the same petitions, which causes the late night and the arguing back and forth and the discussion, because there, a lot of these petitions are, you know, sometimes I just wonder, what is the intent of these petitions? What is the intent to do to our co-op? And year after year, and that's what causes frustration, and that's what causes division. The other comment I wanted to make about, everyone's talking about NASDAQ and numbers and people moving in, there is an ebb and flow of the housing market and individuals who are in our town. People come to the town, and I know this can be argued in a negative way, but people come here to raise a family and to have children. And then many people move on. Their children move to the West Coast, they move to the West Coast. They want to go to warmer weather, they move to warmer weather. They have a dream home on a lake, they move to a lake. You know, this is what society does. And so to just say to everyone that, you know, we're going to blow up and explode, we have a finite number of space here. We have a finite number of houses. New housing coming in with the zoning laws that we have. We have 55-plus people coming in. We don't have major housing developments being built. People choose to conserve the land and put it into protection rather than build, you know, gigantic housing developments. We're not Nashua. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Mr. Davidson has risen.
Yes, Doug Davidson, 85 Ryder Road in Hollis. The first thing, I'm not sure where I am on this petition warrant, to be quite honest with you. So I haven't decided whether I'm in favor of it or not. But as Mr. Sacks pointed out earlier, the process is a multi-year process. And if the word had been, if I may believe and say the word had been, we would go through many deliberative years of whether this was the right thing to do, and if it was, how we would do it. And as you mentioned, not unlike what the process would be for changing the co-op or leaving the co-op, which is, which I don't see this as saying that it. Okay, so, so to me, I think it's, the argument is proven, if you agree with it. I'm not sure if I did it. Okay. The other thing is, I got to say, I wasn't getting up there to even speak for this article, but I am shocked, I am absolutely shocked that so many people are against having the voices of the voters heard. The warrant petition mechanism is a legal mechanism in this state. It's run by state law. And for anybody to say, whether it happens year after year or not, that when you get enough sufficient names of registered voters to sign a warrant, that it shouldn't be heard, or it should be deferred to the school board, to me is a problem, and it's undemocratic. And I think you need to really think a sober little bit, some remarks to be heard regarding that. I don't agree with every warrant article that's been addressed, clearly I don't. I'm against many of them. But to say that people don't have a voice, or shouldn't have a voice, to me is just a problem.
Thank you. Sure, Mr. Sacks.
I'm not a lawyer that's been through the wording quite any time. And the way the article is written, if we change, if this were approved, it would change the structure of the co-op. It's a multi-year process. It's cowardly, and it would have to go through a iterative process until it was due by the owner and the state. But it is not an upper down. This is the upper down. If this gets voted on, then the articles change, but it's multiple years before the change occurred because of the process to establish an output, dissolution of the middle school co-op.
So it's different than if we were to try and dissolve the co-op, which does trigger a three-year process, and then there's an up and down row at the end of that. This is an up and down row in the beginning.
Yeah, Tom, you were on Zoom. I have a good call time here.
The wording that's already, it's lax, the phrases that say that there's anything other than having to go back and rework the process and be stated to why. Last thing I can recall, the co-op article, the ruling, the ruling, that here we have a state that if at some point people say they don't want it anymore, then it says, if you don't want it anymore, they go back and you have to propose a new plan.
Jim, do you have any comment on that?
I have a hard time actually hearing. I think that's, that's Tom talking. I can't totally understand him. Sorry.
So I think Tom's point is that there's no, because of the way the articles of agreement are written, Article 15 doesn't really give the committee or group any other exit ramp, if you will, except for the removing seventh and eighth grade. Am I saying that correctly? And so there's no exit ramp other than this.
I don't like the wording. I don't think the wording in the RSA, which here's certain things where you can't go and dissolve again. The wording in our agreement of our agreement saying that if it is not moved by state, or it is not moved by one town, then it goes back to the state, to rework and reset there. I mean, last thing I have to say in the article of agreement, that's saying that no vote or rejection on the plan can be drawn of that.
Jim?
Yeah, I, I, I can't hear him perfectly well, but I actually understand what Tom's saying. This, this part of, this part of the Cooperative School District Statute 1, RSA 195, was a, was a subject of a legislative study committee a couple of years ago. I was a appointed member of that committee, so I spent a lot of time talking about the process for, for dissolution or withdrawal in cooperative school districts. And one of the major talking points was that, once the process started, is there a way for the committee to basically stop the process if they determine that it's not feasible or not worthwhile to continue pursuing the withdrawal or, or, you know, dissolution of a cooperative school district? The law does provide such a, such a process, the committee early on can take a vote to basically stop if it determines it's not feasible. That, Tom is right, I believe, if what he's saying is that the Article 15 process does not contain a provision, it basically requires that the, that the, that the, the grade reduction committee is responsible for studying the process and formulating a plan, and that they are responsible for bringing that plan forward and ensuring that it is placed on the warrant for a vote at some point in time. So if this is approved, there will at some point in the future be a plan for the reduction of grades that is put before the voters of the Cooperative School District.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Mr. Davidson's up for his again.
Yeah, just quick, Doug Davidson, 85 Ryder. Yeah, that's, that's basically what I was going to say. The point is, is that there are many exit ramps that are possible, and one of the most possible is if the committee can factor, hey, you know, this isn't workable, or the conditions under which we passed it two years ago, five years ago, whatever, whatever the time, is really a change, and we want to go a different way now. That option is still there, okay, to change it. And then the other option is to just reject it, to have another warrant and say, the reason why we put that in place no longer exists, so we want to change it. So there are, the point is, there's many opportunities to reverse it, change it, or modify it.
Yeah, you can comment on the table. Okay, okay, we'll, okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to comment on?
Yeah, so we've had hands go up and down, up and down. Some of we have not heard from. The hand is down, but it was up for a long time, so.
Sure, let's see.
Lori.
Lori, just Lori.
Just Lori.
Okay, there is a person, Lori, who wanted to comment, who has not raised their hand anymore. But are you still interested? If you are, we will unmute you.
Sure. Hello?
What's your last, oh, Lori.
Hi, it's Lori Miller. I'm so sorry, my iPad just has my first name. One point I just would like to make is, whoops, I'm sorry, Lori Miller, 14 Forest Hugh Drive in Hollis. One point I'd just like to make is, this, we talk about having this study committee. Who, who is going to be doing the work? And aren't they already taxed with dealing with the pandemic right now? I think it's, it's really inappropriate to be asking our school board and our SAU administration to add on yet one other item onto their plate that's already full of other things. And I will just, that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Is there anyone else?
We have Barbara King.
Barbara, again.
Hi, Barbara King, 15 Barton Road in Hollis. And I had a question. So can next year, say this passes, can next year the same petition warrant article be put on where they say to take ninth and tenth out of the co-op? Is that a possibility?
Yes. Did you just, I'm sorry, I was, they were shifting furniture. Did you just ask, is it, is it possible for them to, next year, if this fails, to go for ninth and 10th? Yes.
No, if they go toward seventh and eighth, and next year, because everyone's saying, oh, just a study, next year, it's, let's take ninth and 10th out of the co-op. Is that a possibility?
Yes, that's a possibility.
Effectively becomes another way to disband the co-op. And, you know, for all the taxpayers and all the property owners, I encourage you to not support this if you like your property value, because just studying breaking up the co-op will impact our property value. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Is there anyone else?
Yep, so we have a repeat, but we have a new person who hasn't spoken to this article, Mallory Rizler.
I would like Mallory to speak first, and then we'll go to repeat.
Hi, Mallory Rizler, 14 Hobart Hill Road in Brookline. I just wanted to echo even off of what Barbara even just finished saying. I was at the meeting last year in Brookline, where we had to vote on the feasibility study to break up the co-op. And I think where a lot of the frustration comes from is, so last year it was breaking up the co-op, the entire high school. Now this year, we're going after the middle school. It's just the continuous question of what's next. And that's what I think people should also be thinking of when they're deciding what to vote for. It's, we really need to think about where these ideas are coming from, and what's the source for them, and what is the larger idea. Thank you.
This was one. We have another, one more person?
Michelle Finkjohn.
Michelle St. John.
I just want to end with saying, you know, it's not broke. What are we trying to fix? Are we trying to break something, or are we trying to fix something with this petition warrant? I just want the folks that are on this call tonight, when you're talking to other individuals about this petition warrant, is there something broken in this co-op? I think the answer to that is no. So why would we want to break it up? Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Any other hands raised? Yeah. Okay. Have you guys received any emails or texts from anyone who seems like they are not able to get? Any more hands?
I'm assuming no one's going to email me, but, oh, we have a hand.
We've also posted on the Hollis Brookline community, you can comment that as well.
Okay.
We have.
Okay.
We have Daniel Palmer.
Okay, is he the last one?
At the moment, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, hi. I'll be very, hi, I'll be very brief. I just want to follow up on the point I made. Some people commented that it's anti-democratic. I'm certainly not anti-democratic. There is already procedures in place by law where these petition articles have to gain some sort of traction before they can be put in front of the citizens. It appears to be 25 people have to sign on, and there are 14,000 or whatever residents between these two towns. So it's obviously an incredibly easy, easy thing to achieve, to get these petitions on that are, in a lot of times, to Michelle's point, a time waste for a lot of people, because we know what the end result is going to be. So I'm not in any way advocating that there is no, there's, you know, no way to get these petitions in front of the, the community. But I am wondering, and I do not know the answer, but I am wondering if there's a way to increase the, the barriers, if you will, what, what has to be accomplished to get these petitions in front of the voters. I'm happy to support democracy, but I'm also not interested in wasting my time. And so I'm just curious if there is anything that can be done legally, and where that would have to be done to put a little bit, to figure out a way to put a little bit more, I don't know what the, what the right word is, some writer I am, but to put a little more criteria that you have to pass before these, these articles get put before the entire community. That's my only point. Thank you so much again for your time.
And to answer your question, that certainly is not under the purview of the board. Changing that. Go ahead, Jim, Mr. Garuba.
Mr. Garuba, please, just to go ahead. I just wanted to kind of frame this in the sense of, this isn't a question and answer session of state law here, so I just wanted to bring in what I know.
Thank you, Mr. Garuba. Are we set?
I think so.
Okay, at this point, I'm going to close public comment at 8:17 PM. Petition warrant article three, and I will open the floor after I read it, petition warrant article four. Take my mask off, this is long. Shall SAU 41 and the Hollis Brookline Cooperative School by schools hereby affirm our general support for each student's broken origin and support thereof, either legislative body or by state, the following as a matter of general policy. A, the family union is at the head of the court of each individual's social, educational, intellectual, and emotional well-being. B, our schools are a critical element and shall foster an environment where our goal is that all students are able to thrive and positively achieve their potential and develop the content of their character according to. C, each other the primary goal of all communities and administrators to support these efforts. D, any advice of this device and policy that would foster the prejudice of discrimination, segregation, stereotype, intimidation, censorship, harassment, or retribution based on race or sex is by its nature a threat or social fabric, morally wrong and generally unlawful. E, further educational techniques that would prevent fairness and partiality, equality of equality.
Can you speak up, please?
Or conversely, support equity, support attempts of equity redesign, equity-based outcomes, redistribution, retribution, unlearning, or critical race theory are by their nature detrimentally counterproductive to help education and the unified ideals of our greater American society. If any party so wrong may seek port relief under applicable federal and state laws through and with RSA 34, sorry, RSA 354-A, anti-discrimination, RSA 91-A, the right to know at all, noting the enforcement and penalty provisions provided there pending. Therefore, we, the legislative bodies of SAU 41 and the Hollis Brookline Cooperative Schools, with our goal to hereby affirm that this article be published and made an integral policy of our school administrative union and cooperative district. That is petition warrant article four. And if you have a presentation on this by Doug Davidson, I will open the floor. I will open the floor and have Doug begin, you have five minutes exactly.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. Uh, just for a background check, I'm a former high school teacher. I taught Appalachian cultural studies. I've been a ranking member of the budget committee here in the co-op. And I'm a member also of a mixed-race multigenerational family, including, uh, people born on every continent excepting Antarctica and Australia, and also part Abenaki and part Cherokee. So anti-discrimination versus critical race theory in our schools. Next slide, please. So I grew up in the 60s, and if there was one message that came out of the 60s, it was what Dr. Martin was teaching taught us. Our dream of a day when my poor children will not be judged by the color of their skin but by the contents of their character, that in great part is the essence of why this petition was filed. Where are we relative to realizing that dream yet? I don't know, but you can ask Almeida King, Dr. Ben Carson, Michael Jordan, Charles Payne, Candace Owens, Morgan Freeman, and Tyronne Thomas, their opinion on how far we've come in several generations relative to Dr. King's dream, that is, I think, worth considering. Next slide, please. We're seeing in the schools with the DEI committee and critical race theory around the country, the debate of equity versus equality. I'm missing a bullet there, can you scroll it up, please? Okay, so equity versus equality and outcome versus opportunity. They use the analogy at the DEI meeting the other day, like a 100-meter race. So equality means that we all get to the starting line at the same time. The gun race starts, and then we finish first, second, or fourth, fifth, whatever. Equity means that we all get to the starting line, and we all finish at the same time. Okay? So that's part of the whole critical race theory and DEI strategy here. So it's outcome-driven versus opportunity-driven. We're looking for common outcomes, not unlike we're looking at common core driving the least common denominator in terms of, uh, avoiding or hindering achievement. So the court race analogy is, uh, is really the difference between equity and equality and the difference between common outcome versus common opportunity. That's the, that's the dichotomy here. Next slide, please. So to affect critical race theory into a defective DEI strategy, you have to look at everything as if we're prison or racism. So you're looking at identity politics in society. You're looking at defiant groups and victims, those that are dominant, those that are subordinate. And the basic premise is, all of our laws and our legal institutions are inherently racist. These inequalities need to be corrected, and the norms that we look at today need to be changed. In that process, public and private bonds within communities are grossly weakened. And so we go through a process that's not Socratic, or that's not the start, but it's more of an indoctrination. Now, I received a letter today where that concern was expressed by a parent who will see some of the goings-on in their child's classroom that they saw through the Zoom meetings. Next slide, please. One of the other critical elements are, again, race-based, white people force differences that create inequality, systemic prejudice and subjugation. So my question is, where's the years of racism documentation that have been going on here in the Cooperative District or in the entire SEU? I think that if indeed we have systemic racism in the schools, not only should we look at every person in this room and every person in the community, but certainly administrators and the teachers, I for one don't think that situation exists. If there are situations where you have some kid putting a swastika in a bathroom or being prejudiced towards one or another, those are isolated incidents. But if we have a systemic race problem in this community, then we should indict all of ourselves, all of our administrators, and all of our teachers. Because that documentation hasn't been published, those incident reports haven't occurred, and those police complaints have not been made. So the endgame is to make this process of racial dichotomy, racial dichotomy, part of their endgame and to normalize that negative discourse. And the methodologies that they use are traditional ones that you see with the red guards, Alinsky and the BLM. Next slide, please. So here's the slides from, uh, that we saw in San Jose, talking about exactly what I just said. Next slide, please. Here's the, same thing, next slide, please. And then here's the slides that were sent to us, the comments that were sent to us by a parent, given their recent concerns. All right, these are events dated, and the quotes that he wrote down during the various meetings and the interactions with the, next slide, please.
That's five minutes, Mr. Davidson.
Can you roll, can you roll this one?
Five minutes, I gave you five minutes.
Okay, you can't roll this one. All right, uh, this will be published on the webinar. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you. So please support this warrant petition. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, I would like to open the floor for comments.
Yes, Philip.
Who do we have?
Philip Stevens.
Philip Stevens, please state your name and address.
Hello, my name is Philip Stevenson. I live at 262 Hayden Road, Hollis, New Hampshire. Uh, thank you for allowing me the chance to speak. So my understanding is, or not my understanding of, I've actually looked into it, spoken to a lot of people on the committee that this warrant article is in response to, uh, was a committee that the superintendent put together, uh, to help address requests from the students who actually have actually recorded a lot of their own instances of, um, experiences that they've had, uh, negative experiences, um, with respect to diversity and, and inclusion. And there's been a group of people from across the political spectrum, across the spectrum of views, working together for months on this to come together and put together language that is acceptable to a broad array of people, but that also addresses, uh, the fact that this is a real issue. And that, uh, we need to address it and create ways for people to talk about it. And if you speak to the members of that group of a variety of viewpoints, they say that's exactly what happened just being in the committee, and the result of their work is to strengthen and to press that forward. Um, and I think that the, the presentation we just showed and the sort of wild references that are way out of what, why this was put together and what it's meant to address demonstrates that it's, you know, addressing this sort of paranoid, um, I don't even know what to call it, uh, view of the intentions of people who want to make sure that those who, um, are being left out or, or, uh, or, or where there are situations where people just felt like they're being left out need to have and should have, uh, our support as a community.
Stevenson, thank you very much. Minutes are up.
We have Durrell Smith.
Mr. Smith, um, please state your name and address. Durrell, are you there?
Did it work? Yep. Yep, thank you, Durrell Smith, 42 Rocky Pond Road in Brookline. And chairperson, my apologies for calling out a person in the last, last comment I made. Um, what, I think the gentleman just before me basically said, well, so I'm really just, um, reiterating what he said, the, the intent of the DEI, DEI committee really is to look at, um, to a certain extent, how do we basically give students inside of our school system the resources they need where they're at, regardless of the rest of the school body, to help them to be able to achieve their goals at the highest level without feeling like they have to be demeaned in order to get there? Um, that, that is pretty much the gist of it. It's not just based on race, i- it's based on all of our students, those that we might say are advantaged to those that might be disadvantaged. How do we give each of those different groups the resources they need to excel to the level that they truly want to be at? That's really what we're trying to, to do, and it's not just based, it's not just based on race. It's, it's based on the individual students and what they need.
Okay, thank you. Um, I have, I've received texts by two members of the Zoom call. I don't know if they can do the chat, but Natalie Huthian and Robert Mann are both, um, need to be in the list if people want to speak. Um, I also have a member of the public young person who'd like to speak, and I have some other members. So, um, Gina, who were you going to put up? Joe, I'm going to get a couple of people on Zoom, and I'll get to you.
Um, Kat McGeeh.
Kat McGeeh, go ahead, Kat. Kat?
Yes, thank you. Thanks, I wasn't able to unmute, but there you go. Um, yeah, I just wanted to say, um, I actually participated in the DEI public call, um, last year and was very impressed with the work that I heard the group that had been together for several months doing. And I see this, um, petition warrant article as in competition for being able to outline what it is that the schools are going to come up with. And I was a little confused by the wording on this, but I had a question actually for Mr. Shaughnessy. I have put petition warrant articles in in the town of Hollis before, and they have a template for warrant articles that require that your signatures be on the same page with the wording of the warrant so that they can be sure that the people who've provided their signatures are signing the content of the warrant that you have. And this is not done in that format, so is it considered a legal warrant the way that it's been presented?
Jim, are you there? Can you answer that question?
Yeah, um, you know, I, it's, it's a little bit of, 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 first of all, Hollis Brookline doesn't have that process requirement, but also when I read the heading at the top of the signature pages, it says that said petition included herein by reference. You know, so then it becomes like, you know, do, do I really have a legal basis for saying it's not a lawful, lawfully signed petition? Um, and, you know, so we, the, the district doesn't take that position. I don't think the clerk of the district took that position when they reviewed, or whomever reviewed, uh, the signatures to ensure that they conformed with the elected, the, the registered voters. So I, I don't, I don't think it's, it's illegal for it to be a valid petition warrant article.
Okay, and then there's one more question that I have then about, um, about the way that it's formulated, because it does seem to want to have the legislative body, which I guess is the people who organize the warrant, uh, are thinking they're speaking for us, uh, all of us, in saying that they want to have relief whereby they can sue the schools if the schools don't implement these words, um, the way they think is correct. So, uh, is that something that a petition can actually impose on schools and a school board and officials and authorities that we have that we're paying for public services?
Um, well, so there's a, there's a lot of different questions there. What I'll say is, um, again, the, the, a, a petition warrant article, the default rule is you put it on the, on the warrant unless it's illegal. And a petition warrant article is illegal, for example, if it, if it attempts to give the governing body or the school board authority to take an action, that's, that's not legal. Or, or that's not authorized by law. Um, this petition warrant article, I did review it with, um, my client. It, it's, it, it doesn't purport to give the board authority to do something illegal. So there wasn't a clear basis not to put it on the warrant, but I have to say, it came somewhat close to that.
Yeah.
Um, just because some of the language, although possibly well-intentioned, um, does suggest a limitation on how the district teaches anti-discrimination.
Right.
However, it did, it did pass the legal test. Um, however, um, this petition warrant article is most definitely advisory-only. Um, it, it will have no binding effect whatsoever on the school board if it passes. Because the legislative body does not have legal authority to define the educational policy of the school district.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, educational policymaking is by law, um, the duty, responsibility, obligation of the school board, uh, that you elect and not the legislative body. So it's really a, um, it's a, you know, do, is, is this what the voters sort of want, uh, to happen, but it's not binding? And finally, it, it doesn't create a private right of action or a new cause of action for voters, uh, to seek additional legal relief that isn't already available. If it's available under the law, then it's available. This doesn't create any new rights, um, for, uh, for citizens in the community.
Yes, and it says that in here. It says if you want any relief for anti-discrimination, go to this law. So it doesn't really.
Kat, you have like 10 seconds left of speaking. I'm going to let, I, I appreciate the question and answer because some of these questions I was actually going to ask Jim, but if you have a final point, you might want to make it.
Hold on one second.
What happened? Did you unmute right there? Okay, so you've been accidentally muted, we're going to unmute you right now. Got it? Kat, are you there?
Oh, oh, yes. I mean, I, I don't want to belabor the point. I just think in the body of the article, it does quote that RSA 354A is the anti-discrimination law that would cover anyone who felt harmed or who wanted to take action.
Okay, thank you. I think we've got our answer, but I just want to clarify that, Jim, the point Jim made is that this is advisory-only, and I think the public just needs to understand that if this were to pass, um, it is advisory, right? That's the difference. Okay.
I believe, um.
Oh, Joe, 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 sorry, I did not forget you. Well, actually, I kind of did, but Mr. Solan helped me out there, so.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, Joe Gruer, Manchester Drive. I'm speaking in favor of a warrant article to reject critical race theory. Critical race theory is a flawed concept which leads to perpetual division by rejection of all authority structures. It does not differentiate between benevolent restrictions like those imposed by parents on their children or the benevolent, benevolent authority of the school board. It portrays all authority as oppression. It perpetuates division by dividing people into various identity groups and seeks to group ideas by identity. Other school districts that have embraced this theory have gone to such measures as declaring American-based decisions as racist based simply on the race of those of, those in authority. Bans on cultural appropriation, such as Italian cooks selling Mexican food and similar divisions based on race, are the result of this flawed theory. This is the opposite of what I want, what I believe in and what I want to teach my children. I believe people and ideas should be judged by their America, and I believe people should be encouraged to work together and value their differences. Go ahead, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gruer. Um, I do want to, just for the record, this public comment section opened at 8:19 AM. I want John to be able to hear that, or PM, sorry, not AM. Sometimes it feels like. Okay, um, so we have some more. I see Tiffany's rising, but I said Natalie Huthian, Rob Mann, and then some other people.
And there's the one with the hand up. But I believe, I, I wrote down Aaron Kincaid before you told me about Natalie Huthian.
Okay, so we'll do Aaron first, then Natalie, then Rob, right?
Yeah.
Okay, Aaron.
Okay, I'm here. So thank, thank you for letting me comment on this. Thoughts on this? One, one of the big things, and I've been involved in this whole, um, DEI thing in various ways over the last six months or so. One of the big things that bothers me is the word equity versus equality. And so they're very different in terms of what they mean. Equality means that each student is afforded the same opportunity to succeed as the other students are. Equity means that each student is guaranteed the same outcome regardless of their effort. And those are very different. And I've, I've been harping on this, you know, in my communications about this, about this, um, curriculum for a while now, where no one seems to recognize that that's the case. I think it's important. Uh, this is not, somebody earlier said it felt like something with respect to the, those of us who were opposing, uh, this curriculum. It's not about feeling like, it's about what makes sense. It's about facts. And, and the whole cancel culture, um, that's going on right now, we shouldn't erase American history. We should recognize that it happened. It's not all good. I got that, and, but, but we shouldn't cancel it. We should teach the students what happened, because that's how we, that's how we prevent mistaking the same. because that's how we, that's how we prevent mistaking the same things in the future. We should, we should teach what happened and not cancel it.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay, I'll, I'll stop, I'll stop there.
Thank you. Um, I think Natalie Hutan is next on our list.
Yeah.
There, um, yeah, my name is Natalie Hutan. Um, I live at 24 Powers Road. Um, I'm, you know, I just wanted to stop in here, and I have to say, like, I, I grew up in the school system. I'm 23 years old. And, and I saw this petition. I've never spoken up at a school board meeting before, but I really felt like I had to say something, because, you know, as someone who grew up going to the school system, and I'm not far out of it, I, you know, graduated in 2015. Um, I have to say, it does a huge disservice, um, to students like myself to not, um, acknowledge the blind spots, um, and, and to acknowledge critical race theory. Um, and, you know, I, I think there's this conversation happening around like, are these reported, or, or, or why haven't students come forward? Where are the police reports? And I think that it's, very fair and honest of us, um, to say, well, well, maybe we don't have systems in place that make it easy for students to report. Earlier this year, there was, um, on the Facebook page, I mean, really countless experiences being told by students about their experience, um, in the school system revolving, um, race. And I have to say, as someone who graduated and then went out and got a job, and, and I, I really, there was a lot that I didn't learn, um, in that there weren't conversations around about my own blind spots as a, a person of, a, a white person. And I just think that opening this door up in the school syst-, in, in, at Hollis Brookline would literally only make for more open and honest conversations around race, and, um, I, I just don't think it could do any harm to have these conversations when they're out there in the real world. You leave and, and you're confronted with these things, and why not have a healthy, open conversation in the school district? Why, why, why wait until we get to the world to figure it out on our own, you know? So, and I just wanted to say that, um, and stop in as, as someone who wishes this, you know, I have to say, I just think this petition does students a disservice, because they're gonna be confronted with all these things once they leave.
Thank you, Natalie. And, um, Rob, Rob Mann, you're up next. Rob?
Yeah.
Hi, yeah, I'm searching for the mute. Uh, I, misunderstanding, I, I don't wish to speak to the initiative. However, I wish, Madam Chair, just to point out that this is still in committee under the superintendent's, um, auspices. This has not come before any of the school boards under SAU 41. And I speak because I'm a member of one of the boards, so just for folks who don't know. So I just want to add that, and that's all I, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. That's a good clarification to make, that the Hollis Brookline Cooperative School Board does not have oversight over the body of the SAU 41. They, it's not how it works. So, thanks, Rob. And Rob is the chair of Hollis School Board. Okay, um, I'm gonna let Tiffany speak next, and then I assume there's some others. Okay. Ms. Tessa?
Ms. Tessa, I'm on one more. I want to speak to two points.
Tiffany, I'm having a hard time hearing you. Thank you.
I'm sorry. I want to speak to two points. The first is that there were some absolutely false statements that were made previous, so I want to make note of those for the community, because I realize that this work is hard and this work is confusing and there's a lot of terms. Why do I realize that? Because there was a group of eight of us with extremely diverse views that came together and have worked collaboratively in a bridge-building process to define these terms for our town. And I absolutely encourage for the community to go and look at all of the minutes of the work that's been done. And also, I refer to the many members of the community that came out and spoke. We've heard them. So, the thing that's wrong is that there isn't a visual on there that shows a race that shows equity as the, as the outcome, as equal outcome. What there is, is there's a visual on there that shows equity as equal opportunity. But I don't want to talk about the visuals. I want to talk about the real education. And the truth is, is that equity in education is defined as, and is also defined in the statement that we have made of this group, as equal opportunity, not equal outcomes. So there's a grievance. So, to put this warrant article is really just a slap on the face of the process. And I think the community, community members that are concerned should join the work, just as the partisan divisive warrant article that's out there. So, I'll speak again.
Thanks, Tiffany. Okay.
We have Todd Porter.
Todd Porter. Todd, can you hear me?
I can.
Great, we can hear you now. Go ahead and say your...
Todd Porter, uh, 24 Cameron Drive in Hollis. So, I, I wanted to speak to this, uh, this warrant article. You know, number one, make the point that, you know, within this article, I, I believe we are setting a dangerous precedent of a small group of people, relatively small, attempting to, you know, leverage their point of view on the community. I, I think that there is, um, you know, references to censorship here. I, I fear that, um, that is the, the way that this is headed. It, once we say we can't teach certain things, uh, you know, that becomes a dangerous precedent to set. Uh, I also think that, you know, in terms of the way the article's written, there are a lot of terms there in quotations that aren't adequately defined. I think, you know, we haven't really been given the, the background in terms of what those, what those terms are for a lot of people that are reading this for the first time. So I think, you know, we're, we're seeing a lot of alarmist language in the presentation that we had up front in terms of what this means and how we must protect, you know, our children, and I, I think that just becomes a, uh, a, a vehicle for that group of people to be able to leverage their point of view on, on, and, and dictate what the schools teach. Uh, and I, I do, I'm, I'm obviously against that, and I think, you know, in, in terms of the way the language is written, it, it is very, it reads as very mom and apple pie, but hidden within this is, is, is a lot of dangerous concepts, a lot of, uh, attempts at censorship and, and thought policing, and I think, I, I am firmly against this, and I would encourage you to, to, uh, to vote similarly. Thank you.
We have Don G.
Don G?
John G.
John G, okay. John, are you there? John, hello?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Please tell your name.
Jonathan Garuba, 30 Meadow Drive. Um, I'd just like to say that CRT is a fundamentally flawed idea. Correcting and solving inequality cannot be done through a process which institutionalizes grouping of peoples by identity. That, enough, that process in, of itself is inherently discriminatory and contradictory. I reject racism of all types, and accepting CRT will lead to unintended consequences. Thank you.
Thank you. Someone else? Anyone else?
Okay, so we have a repeat, but we have a new one. We have Katie.
Katie, so let's let Katie go first before we have a repeat. Do we have someone, and you would like to speak to, sir, out there? Okay, so you'll come up after. Is there a couple more? We're gonna do Katie, and then we'll do you, sir. Katie?
Hi, Katie Pareek, 8 Peterson Road, Brookline. You know, I just wanted to talk about the, um, point one in the article about the family unit being at the core, which when you read it at first glance, seems like a really nice idea, but, you know, for me, after I thought about it a little bit, I think that's actually, it, it's, it's a little bit discriminatory against, like, say, kids who don't have a really stable family unit, you know, children in, um, foster care or something like that. Um, it just, I think if we word something like this into our school culture, then you're gonna be leaving those kids out, and they're gonna feel like, what, like, they have some sort of less chance for success because they don't have the stable family unit at the core of their experience. I really think, you know, the core of child's experience is the child themselves. And then, you know, I, I do, I do feel that the language in part E is, is like a motion for censorship, and I just really do not support any of this. So that's what I wish to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Okay, sir, the person who's here in the flesh, good, come on up.
Thank you. My name's David Warner, 148 Ridge Road, beautiful town of Hollis. I'm also on the DEI Commission. Uh, this has nothing to do with the work of the DEI Commission. A little bit surprised that anybody is connected to it. It has to do with a theory of racism called critical race theory. It's also known by another name called building equity. A young student in second grade reported that they first were brought into the classroom, and then were given an oppression test, is what the child called it. They were given, uh, words, and they were asked to say, which was the oppressor and which was the oppressed? The list was, first on the list was white people. Second was American government. Third was Christianity. And so, and the answer was, in each case, each of those was an oppressive group. And the philosophy of critical race theory is, is that our entire country is white privilege, white racism. We need to take down the Constitution. We need to take down Christianity, and we need to replace it with something else. The third stage of the critical race theory is after you get the kids to admit that they are either a member of the oppressive class or the oppressor, that they then go through an unlearning process. The unlearning process tells them to tear down the Constitution, tear down Christianity, forget what mom and dad told you, and trust the teacher to guide you to what? To an equitable outreach.
Exactly.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. What I'm asking people to do by this warrant is wake up to this critical race theory. It is a national movement. It's not anything to do with the DEI Commission. It is an offensive and violent approach, going after second and third graders. There's a wealth of ideas out there that are much superior to that. The young lady who talked about discussing racism, I agree. I keep from California. The kids around here are clueless about what's really going on in the world of racialism.
Two minutes remaining. Thank you.
All right, so we have, we have a Kathy.
Okay, Kathy? Kathy?
Hi, this is, this is Kathy Grossman, uh, 140 Ridge Road in Hollis.
Thank you, Kathy. Go ahead.
Um, I'm, just wanted to say clearly that I'm very against this petition. Uh, one of the things, there's many reasons, but one, in, in part D, they talk about not wanting censorship, and then in part E, they elaborate all the ideas they want to censor. This is ridiculous. It hamstrings the educational process, the teachers, the school boards, and does a disservice to all of our students' education. And I want to strongly say that I'm against it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grossman.
Um, I'm just trying to see. So I do have Erin Penkasic again, but, um, she's spoken already to this. I have Michelle St. John, who has not.
She has not spoken to this yet?
Not to this, no.
So we'll take Michelle next, because she hasn't spoken to this yet. Michelle?
Yep, thank you. Michelle St. John, 29 Norture Drive, Hollis. Um, I am, uh, very much against this, uh, petition warrant article. I won't go into the details of the content. I think it speaks for itself with contradiction and setting its own agenda, again, from a very small vocal group trying to dismantle our, um, system as it stands, which has been effective for decades here in Hollis and Brookline. But more importantly, I feel that, um, this was a last-minute petition with a very specific agenda to bypass the SAU-appointed DEI committee who has worked together, who has, um, listened to each other and the differences, had public hearing where they got input from members of the public. It is a process, and it, this should not take precedence over a designated committee where the work to listen to the students and to ensure that, um, everyone in our community has the tools that they need to succeed as students. And as the young woman, the young graduate spoke, we do need to acknowledge our past, and we need to acknowledge the stories and the history that wasn't told because of the oppression on, to the people that they weren't allowed to tell those stories. So I vehemently oppose this, and I know that the school board and the voters will do the right thing by this. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Hello, sweetheart. We have Erin.
So I have Erin, I have Anna Birch, I have Drew Morrissey, and then Natalie Hutan.
Okay, wait, so you have, okay, we'll let Erin go first with this heat. Go ahead, Erin.
Okay, I think I'm unmuted at this point. Uh, so, so my, my points relative to that, and, and actually they're amplified now by what I just heard, is that we should teach history, but we should teach it in an unrevisionist manner. We should teach what really happened. History isn't all good. Some bad history happened, and we should teach that to our students. Right? And, you know, Todd made the point earlier, what should we teach? Right? And so we, we need to think about this point, and this is the key, I think, to this whole argument, is that if our teachers are teaching the students what to think and not how to think, they have failed as teachers. And that's what this is all about. And I'll stop there.
Thank you, Erin. Okay, I think you should do it. Anna Birch next.
Anna Birch.
Okay. Tiffany, can I do Anna first? Because I think you spoke to this already. Anna, go ahead.
Hi, Anna Birch, 16 Broad Street. Speaking of teachers, I just wanted to say, you know, I'm, I'm very much against this article, and I have a son in eighth grade, and I can't tell you how deeply impressed I am with the teachers, uh, Mr. Caprero, Dr. DeRosa. I just feel like, you know, my son has learned so much in these classes. I can't wait for him to go to high school and have, um, Mrs. Balfour, and so on and so forth. I just feel like they're doing an amazing job, and they are getting the kids to really think. I can't believe the conversations. My son comes home, you know, talking about what he's thinking about, so. Um, and I also want to say I'm really impressed with the DEI committee. I, I've went, gone to one or two meetings just to listen, and again, broad spectrum, spectrum of people having these conversations. I've been impressed, and I just want to say I'm against this article. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Anna. If you said you have Drew Morrissey?
We have Drew Morrissey, yep.
Um, Drew hasn't spoken yet, so we're gonna do Drew, and Tiffany's vacation, so. Drew, you can go ahead.
Hi, this is Drew Morrissey. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, yes, I'm at 8 Hills Farm Lane in Hollis. So I have a couple of things to say. While I support, uh, the warrant conceptually, I, I don't support it as written. Um, I'm a parent of two children, Hughes and, and HPS, and, um, what I'm really not hearing from anybody is, is the audience that critical race theory should be targeted at, particularly in terms of their age groups. Critical race theory, uh, was a series of ideas that originated in college, and these are college-level ideas that we do need in some respect to teach our children, but I certainly, as a parent, want to have some input as to the appropriate age for some of these things. And the trouble with teaching, uh, young kids, for example, in HPS, is that when it comes from a teacher, it's, it's, it's not just, uh, a suggestion, it's more like, uh, authority. So, you know, for the same reason that my child who goes to HPS believes in Santa Claus, because I told him about Santa Claus, he's gonna believe anything he's told. Uh, and therefore, um, I really think that, that what we need to be talking about is the appropriate age and the appropriate ideas that we start introducing our kids to these. Thank you.
Thank you, Drew. And just a point of clarification, this is the Cooperative School Board, and so we actually oversee grades seven to twelve. Just, just to clarify, current.
Okay, and just, if I could just follow up on that, my older son's going into seventh grade next year. Um, I want to have input as to how these ideas are communicated. I've seen and heard of a lot of reasonable suggestions, and I've heard what I'll just refer to as radical suggestions. And I feel as a parent, I need input on that.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. Is there one more? Go ahead, Tiffany. You can go up and do that, and you can tell me.
Ms. Tessa, 101 Warhol Road. A few more points that I wanted to leave you is, don't be fooled. I do believe that this is against the process and the work that is already there. The reason I believe it is the first slide we saw in the presentation at DEI slash CRT. Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion is not critical race theory. Critical race theory has never been mentioned in any of the work in DEI. Not once. Go check them in. Not only that, but critical race theory is not being taught in our schools, nor is it in the curriculum. You can go look at the curriculum.
at the curriculum. Critical race theory is also not rampant and prevalent in our nation because I am also an educator in Massachusetts and it's not all over the place. Is it in some pockets? Yes. So is also creation theory too. I was in Marimba when we fought that. So the idea of critical race theory and diversity, equity, inclusion, diversity, equity, and inclusion is not just about race, it's about each individual. In addition, there is a part here, part D, that says any divisive policy that fosters prejudicial discrimination, segregation, intimidation, and censorship will buy the actual statement there, that would be this warrant article. This is divisive, it's intimidating, it's censorship, by listing every single word that can't be said. And talk about words. There were complaints about, oh, this is an undefined term. There are so many undefined terms in this warrant article. And the biggest one of concern would be equity distribution. That's the fear, that something will be taken from you and given to someone else. That is not equity in education. Equity in education is giving every student what they need. And it has nothing to do with equal outcomes. So please, don't be duped by this warrant article. We're doing the work. Join. Thank you, Tiffany. Oh, we have some people. Before you get to Mr. Davidson, we have some people here.
Natalie Huetan.
Okay, Natalie's the one.
Repeat, Todd Porter. Gregory Darbone.
Hello.
This is Greg.
Okay, Gregory, thank you.
Okay, I'll speak first. I'm Greg Darbone at 65 Cleveland Hill Road, Brookline, New Hampshire. And I have had two kids who went through the school system, very proud that they did, and great system. I'm talking more as a veteran here than as just a voter. I think Mr. Morrissey and the lady who just spoke, spoke very well about this whole situation. I want to tell the voters that we are the envy of New Hampshire with our school system. We veterans are invited into the elementary schools, the middle school, and the high school to speak to those kids during the various holidays veterans are associated with. In fact, a few years ago, the principal of the high school, and I don't, it's not Mr. Barnes, but the one before him, but they wanted to do away with one holiday to increase the academic year. So they decided Veterans Day would be the one that's not going to be celebrated. The kids put together a petition to make sure that that holiday was celebrated. The kids said, we grew up with these veterans and we want to celebrate them. So I personally do not think we have an issue. I understand this is something that's boiling up throughout our country. But I think here in our school system, we have teachers and parents who understand that, yes, we've had bad history, we need to teach it, but we also have great history and we need to celebrate it. So I applaud the parents who want to be involved, but I also applaud that the school district, the teachers, the principals, and the school board all want to celebrate that we are a great nation in very different ways, but we are a great nation. So I don't think this is a problem and I don't think this is a problem that needs a solution for our school district. We should monitor it, yes, but that's a parent's responsibility and the school board's responsibility. Thank you very much.
So new speakers that have come before, we have Julie DeMaris.
Okay, let's have Julie go first and then we'll go to Mr. Davidson because he's standing and then we'll go to the other speakers. Julie?
Hi, I'm Julie DeMaris, 24 Mill Road in Hollis. Just want to say that I'm against this petition. Somebody previously commented that teachers shouldn't be teaching our kids what to think and I agree. I do, however, think that they should be taught how we have come to think the way we do and how historical events and decisions that have been made throughout history have influenced our, the way we look at things socially, our worldviews, our socioeconomic positions. The way this petition is written with the, you know, first item being that the, you know, center of our education, of our kids' education should be coming from the family unit. I think that's intended to take the responsibility out of, you know, this, the school setting where everyone should feel that they are seen and heard and, you know, that they've, they understand that they have a place there and that they, you know, understand what discrimination is and how to avoid that and learn from our mistakes. So that would be my input. And I just think it's really important that as our kids go out into the world, especially in these later grades, that they're, they have an understanding of these, you know, historical events that have happened and the reason that they, that we might all, you know, think the way we do. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Maris. Okay, Mr. Davidson?
Mr. Davidson, if you have to speak up, please. People on Zoom are having a difficult time here.
Okay, Doug Davidson, 85 Bryant Road, Hollis. Yeah, just to clarify a couple of things that have been said here. There's no way in this petition anywhere, any wording that restricts, that restricts communication, talking, and even using the words, okay? All right, it's, the words foster. So we want to foster prejudicial discrimination and segregation. We want, we want to force the policies that are against those things, all right? And that's explicitly stated. And further, in the other section, we're talking about fairness and partiality and we're looking at supporting or not supporting outcomes of equity redesign, equity-based outcomes and redistribution. So related to the term equity, if Miss Tessa thinks that the wording should be changed, then the words mean things. Equity means what it means. So why doesn't she not use that term? Why doesn't she have the committee not use that term and talk about equal opportunity? The committees try to redefine the term equity to mean equal opportunity. They don't mean the same thing as several people have commented about. So why don't we use the right word? Why don't we use equal opportunity, all right? Why don't we say we're against discrimination in all forms, okay? And why, why don't we go about using those sorts of words rather than try and change the definition of the words as they're written in the dictionary? So I don't understand that strategy. I would suggest that she do that, please. If she did that and rejected critical race theory, we probably wouldn't even need a petition. But that hasn't happened.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. Okay, so I feel like we have a couple more people on Zoom and I think at this point, I'd like if you could probably end this. I mean, we have the two people, two or three?
We have three people, but we have one new speaker.
Okay, so let's just take them in order as they graduate in.
I'm just checking the order, I'm sorry. Todd Porter.
Todd Porter?
Hello, Todd Porter, 24 Cameron Drive again. So I just wanted to add to what I said earlier that, you know, I think in this article, we're not giving enough credit to, number one, the administrators. We're not giving enough credit to the teachers in our, in our schools, who everybody has spoke very highly of. And we're not giving enough credit to our students, you know, to be able to think critically. I understand, you know, seventh, eighth graders, you know, that that is a fear. And as a parent, I was often fearful of what, you know, they would bring home from school or, you know, talking to their friends. But, you know, I think encouraging the discussion, encouraging the open conversation about these things is not a bad thing. I think once we start trying to limit what is discussed in the school, again, is going to detract from the administrators from doing their job, the teachers from successfully doing their jobs, and the students to be given the opportunity to think critically and say, is it, do I agree with what's being said or do I question it? Do I challenge it? You know, I really, on the, on the whole of this warrant article, I disagree to, you know, with every fiber in my being to say that we need to, as a community, take the decision out of the hands of the professionals, the teachers, the administrators that we have trusted with our children's education for, you know, for a good portion of their lives, and then, you know, try and limit what they can and what they can't say to our students and what they can and can't teach. And again, this is all kind of hypothetical. None of these concepts are currently being taught, is from what I'm hearing. So this is really just an attempt to leverage a point of view on a, on a group and our community and I disagree with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Porter. We have two more speakers and then we're going to end the public comment portion of this public hearing.
We have Colleen Mickovich.
Colleen Mickovich? Colleen?
Thank you. Yes, I'm here. I'm Colleen Mickovich, 29 Ironworks Road, Brookline, New Hampshire. I'll try to read what I wrote quickly here and I apologize if it's repetitive. I was out of the meeting for part of this. I'm strongly opposed to this position, the petition. It's poorly written, incredibly vague. There is no definition of divisive, yet it asks the community to allow the district to be sued under anti-discrimination and right-to-no-law for anything deemed divisive. It asks the SAU to accept that concepts such as unlearning and critical race theory are by their nature detrimentally counterproductive to healthy education. This in itself cannot and should not be accepted by a district seeking to teach reality and to teach our children history and civics. This petition opens up the district to lawsuits for even putting this forward to the community. It also attempts to create a right to seek damages for words and concepts spoken and discussed while not being clear as to who would be liable for uttering those words, and then asks a local municipality to wrongly interpret state anti-discrimination law to include concepts the petitioners do not like or do not, do not want their children exposed to. This simply cannot be done and it is not legal on so many fronts. It is essentially asking the district to discriminate by teaching only a preferred, anti-inclusive, and fake version of history and then ask the district hold itself and its teachers liable for anyone who chooses to teach history and/or social, emotional learning concepts in a non-discriminatory, honest, and inclusive way. So essentially, the petition is asking SAU staff to discriminate, then hold themselves liable for non-discriminatory free speech under anti-discrimination law. And honestly, this petition would be laughable if it wasn't just such a sad reflection of some of the hateful.
Thank you, Colleen.
To the last speaker that you had recognized before you said we would close, is Natalie Huetan.
Okay, Natalie Huetan.
Hi, hi again. My name is again Natalie Dan, 24 Powers Road, Hollis. And I just, you know, a few times it was brought up by some of the speakers, some of the things, you know, the ideas that I had mentioned about being a recent graduate. And I just want to say, like, I think there's an unfortunate, this petition raises an unfortunate view, a kind of perspective of critical race theory. And I think it's actually really unfortunate because all, if that, you know, and this again, is it hasn't even really entered the school system yet, but if it were to, it basically means we think critically about race in, in the community. And which, again, is something that would be such a disservice to deprive students of in any way, shape, or form. You know, and it's simply not discrimination against, it, the petition doesn't make very clear, but it does not, it's simply, it's simply not discrimination against students or the community to acknowledge the harsh history of race in this country. There's an objective truth to it that is hard to swallow, just like many things in history are. But you can't, I mean, you can't, you know, critical race theory applies to it in a way that's honest and gives us the opportunity to have honest conversations that don't make us feel good, but sometimes that happens.
Thank you, Natalie. Okay, at this point, we're going to close public, public, public hearing at 9:13. Yeah? And I'm going to close the public hearing at 9:14. Yeah. Wow, interesting. No, so still 9:13, John, sorry. Okay, 9:13, yeah.
Did you want to, since the public hearing is closed, did you want to shut off the Zoom and have everyone tune into live stream?
Yes, that would be great. So since the public hearing is now closed, we will be shutting down Zoom and you can watch the rest of our meeting on live stream, which you can access through the SAU website. I'm going to take a two-second break, maybe four seconds. I'm actually going to use your resume. And then we can come back.